Welcome to Town Meeting. If everyone can please find their seats. Thank you. Having been advised by the Town Clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of the Town Meeting members are present, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business and the meeting is now open. The meeting will now come to order. I have been advised that pursuant to the law, the warrant was returned upon the Town Clerk Honor before the second day of June by Constable William J. Neville. And now, in keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Will those that are able, please rise, stand, and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you can please remain standing, if you are able, we have some singers from the Milton High School chorus who will lead us in our National Anthem.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight? For the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets red where the bombs burst in air? It proved through the night that our fight was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. And if everyone, if everyone can briefly remain standing, actually, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Elaine Cushman-Carroll, who is retiring from her role as a journalist and staff writer for The Milton Times after many years of dedicated and award-winning service. So, thank you, Ms. Cushman-Carroll, for your wonderful service to the town. Now you may be seated. Thank you. So, before proceeding with the business of the meeting, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. Permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, planning board, Board of Health, and other boards, committees, and departments who are not Town Meeting members to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, with the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is afforded. Permission is also hereby granted to Milton Access Television to televise these proceedings. Please note that, as is the custom, there are two side aisle microphones, each with three seats in the first, in the front row, excuse me, reserved for those waiting to be recognized to speak. And finally, please note that the warrant indicates that the high school has been reserved for Wednesday, June 18th. Due to unforeseen circumstances, that date is no longer available. Accordingly, should Town Meeting not conclude either tonight or tomorrow, Tuesday, June 17th, Town Meeting will not continue on this Wednesday, but instead will continue on Monday, June 23rd, 2025. So, I know, as set forth in Rule 7 of the warrant, the Massachusetts General Laws, the bylaws of the Town of Milton, Town Meeting Time, Fourth Edition shall be the official rules of this meeting. And again, those of you that are interested in the procedural rules are advised to purchase or check out from the library a copy of Town Meeting Time. Again, the rules have changed from the fourth, from the third to the fourth editions, not greatly, but there's an appendix at the end for those of us that are wanting to keep track. And again, the rules of procedure of this meeting have been summarized in the annual warrant, which everyone received, if you were a Town Meeting member, prior to the annual Town Meeting, and which was available at Town Hall and also is on the website, and I will not read out the rules. This meeting shall use the electronic voting system established by the prior Town Moderator and Town Meeting, and so no voice vote will be held. Rather, the vote shall be displayed as recorded by the electronic voting system. And, as is usual, in the event that seven members stand in their place, I will display the results of the vote by Town Meeting members' names. I will give time for members to stand. When we get towards the end of the meeting, please remember not to leave prior to vote being taken and then having an opportunity for people to stand. If people leave, it makes it difficult to determine if people are standing. Individuals who are not Town Meeting members who wish to speak should inform me, the moderator, and I will grant permission to the registered voters of the town. Please do not use the podium microphone up there without advance permission. Typically, that's reserved for people who have presentations. Pursuant to Rule 14 of our warrant, speakers are strictly limited in time to 10 minutes without prior consent by me for additional time, which is largely reserved for Town employees, members of the boards and committees, and other people providing presentations. I will keep time, and any questions should be directed to me. We have six articles this evening, and as I noted in the warrant, I will be recusing myself from Articles 5 and 6. The process for electing a temporary Town Moderator is as set forth in Town Meeting Time, Volume 4. Essentially, the rule set forth that the Town Meeting will elect a temporary moderator when I, the Town Moderator, recuse myself or am otherwise unavailable. Any Town Meeting member may nominate an individual to serve as temporary moderator at the appropriate time, and provided that the nominee accepts, there's a motion that's seconded, we will have an electronic vote, and a majority vote is required. It is my understanding that as a courtesy, the Town Administrator, Nick Milano, has reached out to both of our former Town Moderators, Mr. Bob Hiss and Mr. Brian Walsh, to determine their availability and willingness to serve if nominated as temporary moderator. Mr. Hiss is unfortunately unavailable. Mr. Walsh has indicated that he is available and willing to serve if nominated. Again, Town Meeting decides, and I will explain this process again at the appropriate time prior to the discussion surrounding Articles 5 and 6. And this, this decision rests entirely with Town Meeting. So, as I mentioned, we have in place electronic voting. Mr. Mallett, the Town's IT Director, will operate the electronic voting system. At the conclusion of an article's discussion, I will call for an electronic vote. All those in favor of the motion shall press "yes," which is 1 or A. All those opposed shall press "no," which is 2 or B. And those abstaining can either press "nothing" or press the "abstain" button, which is 3 or C. Do not press any buttons other than "yes," "no," or "abstain." You will have 60 seconds to vote. You can change your time, excuse me, you can change your vote at any time during the 67, 60 seconds that are given. Now, a question was asked regarding the necessity of the full 60 seconds, and this is something that we are actively evaluating. However, at this time, we're going to keep it the customary 60 seconds to afford time for individuals who may be having trouble with their clicker to address the issue with Mr. Mallett. At the end of the 60 seconds, I will announce that the vote has been closed and the results will be displayed. I will read the percent and the numerical vote so that the Town Clerk may record them for the record, and I will include only the yes and no votes for the vote total. And now, we will run a test vote for the electronic voting system. So, again, I don't make these up. Should socks and sandals ever be worn together? A, yes. B, no. C, abstain. If anyone's clicker does not light up, or you have any other issue with the technology, please come to the front, and Mr. Mallett will assist you. And Mr. Mallett, if you'll go through the responses, please look at your name. Perfect. It looks like nobody had any issues. If you do, please come up and see Mr. Mallett. And with that, we will recognize Mr. Benzel, Chair of the Select Board, for a brief remark. Thank you, Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In the spirit of trying to get this done in one night, my brief remarks are just these. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Let's keep it civil and polite, and let's get her done in one night. Thank you very much. I forgot to introduce myself. Benzel, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, Chair of your Select Board.
Thank you. And if the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Tom Caldwell, has any remarks, thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. I will not be as brief as Mr. Zoll, but I'll try. Thank you, Select Board Chair, Zoll. I'd just like to take the opportunity, before I just make some very brief remarks about the warrant, just to offer some thanks. The Warrant Committee is closing its calendar year in a couple of weeks. We still have more work to do with the school department and committee after this meeting concludes, but I just want to offer, I can't thank everybody, but I'd like to mention a couple of people. I really want to send thanks to Mr. Nicholas Milano, our Town Administrator. For those who don't know, he spends an inordinate amount of time with us, advising us, discussing issues, providing us with information. So, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Milano, very much, from the Chair of the Warrant Committee. I'd also like to thank the Select Board. I'd like to thank them for their construction of the warrant and the articles in which they sent to the Warrant Committee on the heels of a very large annual Town Meeting and annual warrant that we worked on for several months. So, I'd like to thank the Select Board in your consideration and the brevity in the warrant that we're seeing here this evening. It was very helpful to the Warrant Committee, and I'd share also with you, members of the Town Meeting. I want to, as the Chair of the Warrant Committee, I'd like to thank the Warrant Committee, 15 members who I've asked a lot of, the Town has asked a lot of, and spent a lot of time in the basement of Town Hall discussing all these matters, which you've seen in one shape or another, sitting here in this room. So, thank you very much, Warrant Committee. I really appreciate you and all the work you did in helping me. And lastly, well, not lastly, I would like to give a big thanks to Ms. Karen Bosworth, our Warrant Committee Administrator. She helps us at every Town Meeting, puts up with my last-minute requests, and keeps our minutes. Thank you so much, Karen. It's a pleasure working with you. And lastly, I'd like to thank you, Town Meeting. I'd like to thank you all for your care for the Town, your diligence in reading the warrant and educating yourselves on every matter that comes before us. It's a, it's a great system, and I just want to thank you as Chair of the Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee will also like to thank you as its advisory board. We have our Town Meeting warrant here I'd just like to get into. As our moderator said, we have six articles for your consideration this Town Meeting. The first concern concerns a typical, what an article we see frequently is a Town's Reserve Fund Transfer. There's some amendments to our floodplain overlay district. In addition, there's a other article to adopt a new property tax exemption. We saw a couple of those in our annual meeting for those who qualify under Mass. General Law 59, Section 5. And obviously, as we all know, there are two significant additional articles, Articles 5 and 6 before us. Article 5, brought forward by the Planning Board concerning our MBTA communities, and also Article 6, which was brought forward by 10 citizens of our town concerning the MBTA communities by law also. So, I would like to thank you all, and looking forward to the meeting, let's get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Before we move into Article 1, I wanted to note that Article 1 and several of the other articles have green sheets. So, there was some confusion about green sheets in the last meeting. So, with respect to certain articles, you have been provided with a green sheet, which is published when and only when the Warrant Committee updates its recommendation to a warrant article. As set forth in the warrant, the Warrant Committee did not have an opportunity to vote on recommendations with respect to certain articles prior to the printing of the warrant. So, accordingly, the Warrant Committee's recommendation for those articles was set forth on a green sheet, which is provided at the front of the room and was published on the Town's website. So, please note that amendments made by individuals, boards, and committees are not printed on the green sheet. These are reserved only for recommendations, whether new or altered, by the Warrant Committee. Again, as clarified by Sue Galvin, our Town Clerk, in her introductory email, there are not green sheets printed for amendments, again, only for new or altered Warrant Committee recommendations. There are green sheets available with respect to Articles 1, 2, 5, and 6, and none for Articles 3 or 4. And with that, we'll move into Article 1, which is to see if the Town will vote to amend the appropriations voted for the fiscal year 2025 Reserve Fund by appropriating $300,000 for the fiscal year 2025 Reserve Fund from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash and to act on anything relating thereto. Mr. Zoll, would you like to be heard on this article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Ben Zoll, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, and Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board voted unanimously to approve this. We just wrapped up, almost wrapped up our numbers for FY '25, and there has been no substantive change since this was put together, so we're fine with it as is. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And, Mr. Caldwell, Chair of the Warrant Committee, would you like to speak on Article 1?
Well, again, Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. This was also a unanimous vote for approval by the Warrant Committee, the Reserve Fund Transfer, monies that were held aside or requested by the Select Board. In my opening remarks, I insinuated some additional work we're going to be doing with the school committee and the school department in regards to this budget. The Warrant Committee, in its evaluation of the fiscal '25 budget, believes these are monies that potentially will be earmarked for the schools to close out their '25 books. The Warrant Committee will be addressing that with the school committee in a future meeting after this meeting. But these monies, we would represent are central to, to closing out the school department budget fiscal year 2025, and they are funds that are most definitely needed by the schools. So, I would ask that the Town consider a yes vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone else would like to be heard on this article, if you could come to the I see no one moving. So, the motion before the body is as printed on the green sheet, which is that the Town vote to amend the appropriations voted for the fiscal year 2025 Reserve Fund by appropriating $300,000 for the fiscal year 2025 Reserve Fund from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash and to act on anything relating thereto. And we will now open up the vote. Please indicate your vote using your electronic clicker. Again, yes is 1 or A, no is 2 or B, abstain is 3, C, or simply do not click anything, The motion passes 98% to 2%, 231 yes, 5 no. And now, we will move on to Article 2. Article 2 is whether to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17F, 22I, and 41D, and this also requires a majority. Mr. Zoll, as Chair of the Select Board, would you like to be heard on this article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board unanimously supports the passage of this article for the benefit of tying restrictions for seniors, surviving spouses and childrens, and veterans to CPI rather than having a flat rate. It's just fair. It's not a new tax, just helps folks that, that need the help. It was unanimous vote. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And, Mr. Caldwell, as Chair of the Warrant Committee, if you'd like to be heard?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. Appreciate the comments. Maybe I cheer Zoll in terms of this article. Like to point out to the Town, the Town already has this tax exemption in place. The difference between this article and what we have now is we're tying it to COLA. So, it was just a cost of living where we expect, if there are increases, that the tax exemption will follow suit for our seniors, veterans, and surviving spouses and minor children. So, it expands, it covers those three categories. The, the general law itself, Chapter 59, Section 5, is rather lengthy and complex. It's rather scary to look at. But be assured, Town Meeting, that, as I indicated, this is already a tax exemption that's in place, and we're simply now, through this statute, tying it to the cost of living. This was a unanimous vote by the Warrant Committee. We ask that you consider accepting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. If anyone else would like to be heard on this motion, if you could kindly come down. I see no, no movement. So, again, this is on the green sheet. The motion is the Warrant Committee's recommendation as set forth on the green sheet, which is that the Town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17F, to allow exemptions granted to those qualified pursuant to Clause 17, to be increased annually as set forth in the warrant, to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22E, or 22F, to be increased annually as set forth in the warrant, and to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41, to authorize an annual increase in the income, in parentheses, gross receipts, and assets, in parentheses, whole estate limits, as set forth in the warrant, or to act on anything relating thereto. And we will now open the vote. As I mentioned in the beginning of discussing this article, a majority vote is required Article 2 passes 99%, 233 yes, 1 no, and 1 abstention. Moving on to Article 3, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize Meredith Hall, Chair of the Planning Board, to give a presentation. Ms. Hall?
Good evening. There actually is not a presentation for this particular article, but I did want to just highlight what a floodplain district is and what the new language would state. The floodplain district is herein established as an overlay district. The district includes all special flood hazard areas designated within the Town of Milton, designated as Zone A or AE on the Norfolk County Flood Insurance Rate Map Firm issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Administration of the National Flood Insurance Program, dated July 8, 2025. These maps indicate the 1% chance regulatory floodplain. The exact boundaries of the district shall be defined by the 1% chance-based flood evaluation shown on the firm and, on the firm and further defined by the Flood Insurance Study, FIS, dated July 8, 2025. The effective FIFM and FIS report are incorporated herein by reference, and all are on file with the Planning Board and Inspeccional Services. This article is simply to update our, our current floodplain maps, and it is required by law in accordance with FEMA, and it also just gives some slight language changes, which were recommended as well. So, it's very simple and straightforward, and it's required by law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Zoll, would the Select Board like to be heard on Article 3?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Ben Zoll, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, Chair of the Select Board. The Select Board has unanimously voted to accept this and encourages the body to vote for it. Anthropogenic climate change is real, and... Anthropogenic climate change is real, and we need to make sure that we continue to address it. And I would add that FEMA requires us to have this done by July 8, so there is a time sensitivity to it, and this is why it's on the warrant today. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. And Mr. Caldwell, if the Warrant Committee would like to be heard on Article Three?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. We ask that you accept the recommendation as printed in the article and also recommended by the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone else would like to be heard on Article Three, if you could kindly come down to the front. I see no one moving, so we will open a vote. A 2/3 vote is required to pass Article Three, as this is a zoning matter. The article passes. Moving rapidly on to Article Four. Yeah. Oh, excuse me. I'm not great at math, but even I know that that's a 2/3 vote. Now, moving rapidly on to Article Four, again, I'd like to acknowledge Meredith Hall as the Chair of the Planning Board to speak regarding Article Four concerning the East Milton Overlay District. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. And we do have a presentation. If we could bring that up, please. Just a minute. And I should introduce myself, Meredith Hall, serving as Chair of the Milton Planning Board and Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. We are excited to bring you this article. We had wanted to bring this to the annual Town Meeting, but because it was so much going on, we decided to put this off. But this is something that the Planning Department has worked on for years and has been really embraced by the community, and a lot of this article really came from the feedback and listening to the residents, particularly East Milton Square, but the residents at large, and it's been widely endorsed by all those who've heard it. So with that, we can begin. The East Milton Square Mixed-Use Overlay District. The overlay goals: strengthen walkability and safe and convenient circulation for all travel in East Milton Square; proactively and intentionally guide commercial district investment; enhance the sense of place district identity; leverage private investments to add community amenities while reducing impacts; encourage mixed-use redevelopment and an increased variety of housing options; improve environmental sustainability and resilience in the district; and preserve and enhance the historic character of East Milton. Next. Here we have the map outlining the boundaries, primarily all in commercial areas. There is one area that is split, the Milton Marketplace, which is partially residential, partially commercial, but that is, we voted to include that. Next. East Milton. Zoning background. The planning efforts behind this. In 2019, the Urban Land Institute, ULI, provided a technical assistance panel and report on building community census, refining a vision for East Milton Square, and providing regulatory and design tools needed to realize that vision, developing a predictable approval process to facilitate private investment. In 2021, the Barrett Planning Group and Dodson &amp; Flinker developed a report based on the master plan and Planning Board's recommendations, looking forward East Milton Square. In 2023, MAPC prepared the zoning language and design guidelines built on previous recommendations and community feedback. Planning process included stakeholder interviews, community meetings, two surveys, Chamber of Commerce meeting, and numerous Planning Board meetings. Following the master plan, the MAPC studies were drawn from a series of connected community visioning and planning processes that had built on each other over the years, including expert, multidisciplinary, and nonpartisan advice on land use. Next. Zoning requirements. Mixed residential and business uses may be permitted by right with site plan review through the Planning Board up to 3 stories and 45 feet. No building shall be erected or altered to exceed 3 stories and 45 feet in height. All business uses otherwise permissible in the East Milton Square Business District shall be allowed by right with site plan review. Residential uses are allowed by right with site plan review as long as they are in conjunction with one or more residential uses. We then created design guidelines. These design guidelines address building design and architecture, the public realm, including streetscape design, walls, fences, parking, vehicular access, which included driveways, alleys, and lots, landscaping, signage, which included quantity, size, design, placement, lighting, which includes fixtures and hours of operation, building and streetscape, sustainability, and stormwater management. Thank you very much. Any questions? We would be happy to entertain them, but thank you.
Thank you, Chair Hall. Mr. Zoll, would the Select Board like to be heard on Article Four?
Thank you, Madam Moderator Ben Zoll, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five, Chairman of the Milton Select Board. The Select Board has voted to approve this with 1 abstention, 4 yeses, and congratulates the Planning Board on a lot of hard work that went into a very thoughtful plan, and we, that the body will endorse it as well. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Mr. Caldwell, would the Warrant Committee like to be heard on Article Four?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. Again, reiterating the statements of the Select Board Chair, the Warrant Committee asks that you consider approving this article. We had a significant amount of time with the Planning Board over several different articles, but especially this one. We found it to be a very thoughtful plan to reinvigorate the East Milton Square area with not only housing, but also diverse mixed business use. It was a plan that came to us unanimous from the Planning Board and was obviously, in our opinion, the result of many years of hard work. So we ask that the Town Meeting accept this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. If anyone else would like to be heard, please move to the front. Again, I see no one moving, so we will open, excuse me. The motion before the body is that the town will vote to amend Chapter 275 of the General Bylaws, known as the zoning bylaw, by inserting the new Section 275-3.23 East Milton Square Mixed-Use Overlay District as set forth in the warrant, and to amend the zoning map to include the East Milton Square Mixed-Use Overlay District as set forth in the warrant. And we will now open the vote. This is a simple majority. Motion passes 99% yes, 1% no, 235 yes, 2 no, 1 abstention. Thank you. All right. Now, Articles Five and Six. So Article Five is a motion to amend the zoning bylaw with respect to the MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District and to amend the zoning map as submitted by the Planning Board. Article Six is a motion to amend the zoning bylaw with respect to the MBTA Communities' Multi-Family Overlay District and to amend the zoning map as submitted by Citizens Petition. Each of Articles Five and Six require a majority vote. As I mentioned, prior to moving on to Articles Five and Six, I will recuse myself from the discussion and vote on these articles. Accordingly, pursuant to Town Meeting Time, Volume Four, Rule 2.2.1, the members of Town Meeting must now elect a temporary moderator. As I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, as a courtesy, the Town Administrator, Nick Milano, reached out to both of our former moderators, Mr. Bob Hiss and Mr. Brian Walsh, to determine if either would be willing and available to serve if elected. As I mentioned before, Mr. Hiss is unavailable, but Mr. Walsh is willing and available. Again, the choice is up to Town... We have the nomination. Can I get a motion, and then we'll second it? Okay, perfect. So I heard a second. Thank you. So, on a motion to elect Mr. Brian Walsh as temporary moderator, the vote is a simple majority. Does either the Select Board or the Warrant Committee wish to be heard? Okay. Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ben Zoll, Select Board Chair, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I would like to encourage maybe a voice vote on this one so that we can proceed quickly. And I think that the Board agrees with the nomination of Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Caldwell?
Tom Caldwell, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, I forgot there for a sec, and Chair of your Warrant Committee. The Warrant Committee, that usually has a lot to say, has nothing to say about this one. We would rather not weigh in on this, just given our appointment by the moderator. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak to this before we open the matter up for a vote? Okay. I see no one moving. Now, thank you, Mr. Zoll, but we are going to do an electronic vote, so I appreciate your efficiency. So, on a motion to appoint Mr. Brian Walsh as temporary moderator for Articles Five and Six, the vote is now open. Still have 6 seconds. Okay, 94% yes, 3% no, 3% abstain. Before Mr. Walsh is duly sworn as the temporary moderator, I will collect my things.
Thank you. Can the body hear me okay? I'd like to introduce myself to those Town Meeting Members who haven't been here when I was moderating, but I was a moderator. I've been a Town Meeting Member since 1992, and I was a moderator for 14 years. I'm a real fan, by the way, of Town Meeting, which have existed in our country, in our state, even before the Revolution. In fact, if you didn't know it, the night the Revolution started and Lexington conquered, they held a Town Meeting. So Town Meeting is a long sacred tradition in this country, and I wanted to just mention that because some articles that come before Town Meeting generate terrific passion and conflicting opinions, and that's okay. I think we have some of that tonight, but we have rules and procedures that govern how and who and when people speak here at Town Meeting. You may only speak for 10 minutes maximum unless you request and receive permission from the moderator. Those who have previously gained permission to make a presentation are allowed to do it for 20 minutes as a maximum, and keep in mind, less is more. Decorum is required. We'll have no personal attacks. If I recognize a speaker and I feel that you're not being appropriate, I'll use the gavel and ask you to step back from the mic. Listen, we all have to be respectful of everyone here at Town Meeting. We're all elected to represent the town, and we want to maintain that decorum. If you want to reference somebody, let's avoid names. You could say something like "a previous speaker mentioned" or "a board member from such and such board stated." Raising voices, and some of the recent Town Meeting, we've had members get up and really start, they get excited and they raise their voices. Keep in mind, I'm not going to allow that. We're not going to get loud and boisterous and intimidate anybody. Just remember, your objective as a speaker is to influence other Town Meeting Members to vote your way, persuade them with credible opinions. Where everyone here is a resident of the same town, we are neighbors, maybe friends, all presumably enjoying our residency in Milton, and I certainly do. And even if we disagree strongly on an article, we likely agree on most issues. So with that as my intro, let's get started. As soon as I find the correct page. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I would like to present a move to reorder Articles Five and Six so that we address Article Six first.
Yeah, would you, sir, would you please identify yourself?
Oh, sorry. My apologies. Matt Morong, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two.
Smorong, you're recognized. I'm sorry. Has it been seconded? Okay. And I see the Chair of the Planning Board. Did you wish to be recognized before Mr. Morong makes his motion? Hi. Mr. Morong, would you repeat the motion?
Matt Morong, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I'll do it the right way this time. I'm moving to reorder Articles Five and Six so that we address Article Six prior.
Okay, so Mr. Morong is essentially saying you want to start with Article Six next?
That's correct.
That's correct. And that has been seconded?
Yes.
Seconded, okay. And, sir, I'll recognize you to explain the reasoning for... And, sir, I'll recognize you to explain the reasoning for your mo- change the order and then I'll recognize the Chair of the Planning Board.
Okay. I make this move because passing Article 6 before Article 5 will reshape the debate about Article 5. Article 5 is a multifamily housing zoning proposal that is not aligned with the town's legal obligations. It does 40% of what we need to do. In fact, the title, "The MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District," is a misnomer. It does not address the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. It is purely speculative, based on a notion of compromise that has no basis in law or reality. I don't compromise and pay 40% of my property taxes to the town. The only thing that will bring the town into alignment with the state law is Article 6, and the result of that vote will determine what is done with Article 5. It makes no sense to pass Article 5 if Article 6 passes. For this reason, I ask that we resolve Article 6 first, then move on to the decision on Article 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marong.
I'll recognize the Chair of our Planning Board, Meredith.
Good evening. Meredith Hall, Chair of the Multi Planning Board and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. It is really imperative that in order and prior to your voting on a 25% plan, that you understand the implications of that and understand what the impacts would be to the town. It's only possible to understand that if you hear what the 10% plan and the justification from the Planning Board on why we strongly believe at minimum a 10% plan should be voted on. Whether you vote on the 10, you want the 25 or not, at minimum, the 10% plan should be voted on. Why? Because what do we know to be fact? Milton has 37.5 developable acres within a half mile of three commuter line stations. The RKG study that will be presented to you with one of the presentations for the 25 is outdated. It is flawed, it is complete, and missing essential facts. RKG admitted back in 2023 incorrect, that they admitted that they had incorrect data using the incorrect number of single-family homes. RKG admitted to the Planning Board during the study that the compliance model was flawed. RKG did not include the number of children that would move into single-family homes when single-family owners downsized. That was completely said, we did not study that, that, we don't have those numbers on that, so those are incomplete. It was not disclosed to the Planning Board while we, while working with RKG, that they were also working with HLC, developing the compliance model. So they were completely in conflict, working for the state and advocating apparently, you know, for clear data for the town of Milton. The data was flawed and incomplete and should not be relied on by this Town Meeting. The numbers have changed, the districts have changed, the number of units in each of the districts have changed, the data that RKG provided is baseless with today's districts of the 25% plan. There is currently, there is currently pending litigation before the Superior Court, which is under review, and the outcome is still unknown. The most important thing that I think this Town Meeting should recognize is this is not just by right zoning. This is very different than other by right zoning, such as what we just passed for East Milton Square. This by right zoning cannot be altered and changed simply by coming back to Town Meeting and revoting the districts and changing it. It's not that simple. This, the particular zoning requires approval, not only by Town Meeting, but by HLC. And do we have any guarantees that HLC would grant that? We do not have that guarantee. Also, in the statute's own wording, Milton has the right to choose which is applicable, the commuter line or subway, if we determine, if determined to be as such. And I will read you from the statute. "In order to understand the significance of the impact of a 25% plan, the residents should first understand the impact of a 10% plan and why it is, why it is not only a better plan, but it is most appropriate for the Milton residents." Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to move the article? Mr. Zoll, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for coming off the bench tonight. Ben Zoll, Precinct 5, Town Meeting Member, Chairman of the Select Board. I do have some thoughts about this, but I'm gonna put those, put pin in that, and I would like to invite one of our state representatives, Mr. Richard Wells, who has some information that he'd like to share with the body as a state rep on this motion.
Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Town Meeting. Very honored to speak as a state representative for the Sabbath Norfolk for the first time tonight to this body. Was not in my intention before today, but as days have passed in Beacon Hill every day since I arrived six months ago, the MBTA Communities Act rises at the top of many discussions amongst many communities now. While Milton have been the first to take action against, they clearly are not alone today. When you sit at the front of the room here, and I'm in my ninth year sitting here, and follow my former colleagues who've sat either Select Board or the Warrant Committee Table or the Moderator's stand, clerks, you can't help when you sit here to realize that when you look out into these seats, you're looking at a reflection of this community. Men and women, diverse backgrounds, diverse colors, diverse makeup, diverse socioeconomic costs, diverse ages. But the single commonality amongst each of you is not just that 026 is your home, that apathy never really lives in this town. We see that in celebratory things. You saw it in a tragic thing on Bull Hills Parkway this weekend where first responders and neighbors rushed to try and save the lives of two people who are mortally wounded. It's probably one of the things of my 40 years, I'm probably always the proudest of, is that people always care. So when it comes to this issue, it didn't matter whether you were yes or no, whether you were for, MBTA are against it. At the core, it was all people who cared. So the dilemma in the State House for both Senator Driscoll, myself, Rep. Phuke Oakley, all of our colleagues is, and for me especially here, is where do we go from here? And so I floated the idea to my colleagues today, to the Warrant Committee tonight, to the Planning Board chair this morning, that we combine Question 5 and 6 and take one vote, and I'll give you my rationale. There are no less than 40 bills on the Hill right now addressing MBTA communities. There are a multitude of reasons. As you know, there are litigation in other communities, and it's probably more than likely that either judiciously or legislatively, there will be some changes to MBTA communities going forward. By merging the two, we would accomplish two things. One, with HLC, we would file a 25% plan. We would also file a 10% plan. The 25% plan is the one they would be acting on, would become law as soon as the body files it and HLC, it would take a few weeks because they're looking at a lot of them right now, once HLC approved it. But we would also expect them to approve the 10% plan and hold that there. And in the case that either by legislative action or by a court decision, that Milton were ever reclassified, the 10% plan would already be on file. The only action that would be required would be to come back to Town Meeting and repeal the 25% plan. I think to some, you might think this is a long shot, but it is legal. I've run it by Town Council. I've talked to my colleagues. We've debated this back and forth. I think the time now is for others to take this fight up and to continue, whether it's those in elected office or those who sit in judicial appointments. And so I won't make a motion, but I hope that someone will amend the motion that's on the floor and make a motion to combine Questions 5 and 6 and vote yes on both the 10% and 25% plan for this town, for the goodwill of this town, for goodwill of our community, and for the future of all those who live here. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, folks, we have a, your moderator has a few issues. The first issue is we have a motion that has been made and seconded in front of the body to move the article. The second issue is, I believe, Mr. Wells, you are recommending that we combine the two Articles 5 and 6. The only, the only time we've combined Articles here in Town Meeting in Milton, oh, and I might want to check with Town Council, so. All right, thank you, folks. I appreciate your allowing us to have a brief consultation on that. So, in Town Meetings in general, and certainly here in Milton, we have precedence, and once we've established a precedence, they're important. Well, merging separate articles together, the Town Meeting in Milton has a history of doing that, and it's called a consent agenda. When we do that, that consent agenda, all the articles that get included in that merge are then not debatable. That does not seem appropriate for these articles. There's a lot of interest, and so in order to accomplish the wills of a member of the Select Board and not violate or change our procedures, I will entertain a motion, and I want to explain it, and then I'll actually entertain the motion. I'm going to entertain a motion to suspend the rules governing our consent agenda. If that is made and seconded, we'll take a vote on that. That will require a two-thirds passage. If that's then passed, we can, we can in fact entertain the motion to combine Articles 5 and 6 as suggested by the previous speaker. So, but- There is a motion on the floor. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Let me, good catch. Let me just take a moment. Okay, folks, so indeed, we do have a motion on the floor. The motion is to move Article 6 to be considered before Article 5. Then a member of our Select Board get up and explain strong rationale as to why we might want to combine Articles 5 and 6. So, it's, it seems to your moderator, your Town Council, and to your Warrant Committee Chair, reasonable to take the vote on moving Article 6 before Article 5 and then entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda. All right, so I hope I've been clear on that. I'm not trying to make it confusing. So where, where are we? We are consider, excuse me, just hold on a second. We're considering the motion that was made to move Article 6 before Article 5. Now, did somebody have a point of order on that? I apologize, but I can't hear. You could come down. I, I can repeat it. I hear him, he's asking if the gentleman who made the motion to move Article 6 first would withdraw the motion. Where is Mr.? Nope, he's not interested in doing that. So, all right, Mrs. Agostino? All right, so I will do my best interpretation, understanding Mrs. Diane DiTullio Agostino, Precinct 9, Town Meeting Member, asked me to ask Mr. Marong to explain are there other motions that he intends to add to Article 6 before we consider the, the concept of moving it first? We're, we're actually, so I can help here, and I think it'll save us time. The motion before the body is just to move Article 6 before Article 5. I'm not sure that we do need to understand the contents of those two articles before we could take a move, and that's the moderator's decision, so thank you. Did anyone else who wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Kelly, you're recognized.
Brian Kelly, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I ask that we be given a few minutes to break and to talk about this among ourselves. This is one of the biggest, this is leading into the biggest zoning article this town has ever voted on, and by the sound of things, it sounds like they're gonna try to dump the discussion on Article 5 after they move Article 6 up and vote on it. So it's critical, and I have some reasons that I can share why we should, before we get into the weeds here, why we would consider having the combined articles. But it's important they know that now before we vote on this.
So, Mr. Kelly, it's a, it's a judgment call- So, Mr. Kelly, it's a judgment call. You have made an assumption in your remarks, and I'm not...
I agree I have. But if my assumption is correct, then it's critical.
So, your assumption is that Article Five will not then be properly discussed?
Exactly. And there is that possibility, and you know that as a moderator, correct?
Well, I would... No, I would tell you this. Because of the... This is a really unusual set of circumstances. So, I'm going to explain again. You have a motion in front of the body to move Six next. Then, we're going to have, because of the complexities... We had a recommendation by a member of the Select Board to combine the two. And because of the complexities there around our consent agenda, I'm going to entertain a motion to waive that rule. And then, I will make this commitment to you, sir, that we will absolutely consider Article Five.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to move Article Six before Article Five?
I have a question on... I guess it's related to what Mr. Wells proposed, which might make a difference in the vote. So, can I speak to that? Christine Hadland, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. And I guess I don't quite understand how we would know what we're voting on. What is the wording? What is anything that we're going to have in front of us if we do this? So, I guess I would suggest if we're going to propose that we approve a 25% plan, which is compliant, why don't we do that first and then put the 10% plan out there? And we can make an amendment to say that we'll submit that if we can't change to be not a rapid transit. Why would we try to do something that we've never done before?
If I may... May I interrupt? So, again, and it... Look, it's a complex issue. The only motion we're considering is to move Article Six to be concerned or debated before Article Five. Right? That's the motion for the body. So, what you would want to speak to is, it should not be moved for reasons X, Y, Z, or it should be moved, I agree, for reasons... But getting into the complexities is different. You'll have an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion before the body, which is to consider Article Six before Article Five? Seeing none, let's move the vote. Open up the electronic voting. And just while you're voting, I want to share, I am a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. I do have a voting, but I, as your moderator, to maintain my independence, I will not be voting while I'm up here. Thank you. The motion to move Article Six is approved, 64% to 36%. Thank you. And now, now we're to the issue of making a motion to suspend the consent agenda rules. Does anyone wish to make that motion? Mr. Zoll, you're recognized.
I'm just making the motion.
Okay. Has the motion been seconded?
Second.
Second.
Second, and even the Chair of the Warrant Committee was jumping up to second that. So, the... So, for clarity, this will require a two-thirds vote, changing the motion for the consent agenda. Just FYI. I'm looking to Town Council. Town Council, do you agree? This is require a two-thirds vote? And he does. Thank you. So, does anyone wish to speak to the motion to suspend the rules of the consent agenda for the possibility of combining the two? Yes, sir. You're recognized.
Michael Chin in Precinct Two. Mr. Moderator, I appreciate greatly that the discretion in ruling something out of scope is yours, and I urge you to rule this out of scope. The town citizens have notice of a consent agenda. There was nothing before Mr. Wells spoke that I've ever heard that these were going to be proposed to be combined. And that was never put to the town. There's Article Five, and Article Six was put to the town. They're separate articles. The Select Board was perfectly able to propose an article that combines them, and they did not. The planning board could have done...
They did not fire it tonight.
Exactly. They did not. And the elected moderator, as I understand it, has implemented rules about making amendments. I don't know that this was made with notification in advance of tonight's town meeting. So, this seems clearly out of scope. And also, it could be accomplished by voting on Article Six. If it passes, have a full debate on Article Five and pass that also. And you have both things passed, which seems to me the same effect as combining. But this has not been put to the town in advance of the moment Mr. Wells spoke, and I urge you to rule it out of scope.
Thank you. Folks, give me a minute to take that under advisement. Thank you, folks, and sorry for the delays. I believe the previous speaker has made an excellent point. The town hasn't been fear-warned about combining these articles. I don't want to cause problems where Town Meeting takes actions that get challenged later due to procedural issues. And so, I'm going to honor that. We are going to finish the vote on moving Article Six, and then we will consider Article Six if it vote passes. If it doesn't, we'll consider Article Five. But basically, we're going to consider those articles separately. And if you are interested in them both, you'll vote them both. If you're interested in separately, you'll vote them separately. And I think that's the safest and most appropriate thing to do, and I thank the former speaker for calling that to my attention. So, right now, Mr. Marong has a motion before the body. Oh. I'm seeing a different screen, though. Thank you, folks. All right. So, folks, we have had a positive motion on considering Article Six before Article Five. So, we will move... Sir, do you want to speak procedurally to this, or do you want to speak to Article Six? Okay. Let me introduce Article Six. Thank you. I'm trying to earn my keep, and I'm asking for a raise. I said, "I'm trying to earn my keep, and I'm asking for a raise." For those who may not know, it's not a paid position. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 275 of the General Bylaws, known as the zoning bylaw, by adding the following new section, 275-3.2X. MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, and to amend the zoning map to include the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, including the following sub-districts: Granite Ave, North Sub-District, Paper Mill Site, Sub-District, Matapan Station, Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, Sub-District, Elliott Street Corridor, Sub-District, Randolph Ave, West, Sub-District, Randolph Ave, East, Sub-District, Milton Station, Central Avenue Station, Sub-District, East Milton Square, Sub-District, and the Thiamont Section Station, Sub-District, as shown on the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District Boundary Map dated... And there's no date on this. XXXX, the MCMOD Boundary Map. Now, folks, you all have your warrant, and you may notice that, in fact, there are many, many pages to this article and motion. And there is a long history at Town Meeting for a moderator to ask that someone make a motion to allow the moderator not to have to read the entire article. It's moved and seconded. All those... Let's take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Excellent judgment. All right. So, folks, we are now considering Article Six. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir. You're recognized.
Do I speak to you, Mr. Moderator, or do I speak to the crowd? I'm confused on that one.
You can speak to them as long as I can hear you.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Mark Croninger, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. Just an anecdote and then a proposal. I, a couple of weeks ago, decided to take a little on-foot field trip from the Fruit Center in East Milton to the closest Matapan Trolley stop, which is Butler. It was exactly two miles by foot, and I had to cross over three on-ramps to get there from 93 and Off with no bridges or any way that. So, the notion that East Milton, which was slated to bear the brunt of this initially, is a viable place that would use the Matapan Trolley as commuting is absurd. But that being said, as those of you who are familiar with this issue probably know, originally, the MBTA law said that there would be a .5 radius, .5-mile radius, drawn around said T station, and within that radius is where the housing would be developed. However, if you draw that radius around the Matapan Trolley, a good portion, almost half, falls into Boston, the Boston city line. So, they could not do that. So, in their infinite wisdom, when they realized, the EO HLC realized, could not accommodate those many units within a .5 radius because half of that radius fell within Boston, instead of saying, "Oops, we made a mistake. Maybe these guys shouldn't have to zone for that many or anything," they said, "Oh, well, here's an idea. You don't have to zone it within .5. You can zone it anywhere." The infamous exception clause, right? So theoretically now, you could zone that anywhere in Milton, right? Those housing units. Anywhere. You could put them on the far end of town, over by Hyde Park. You can put them anywhere. What an opportunity that is for all the people who are zealous supporters of the MBTA Communities Act to put units in their own backyards. There's been a lot of nimbyism accusations here, and let's put that to bed. My proposal would be an amendment that each precinct that votes on this, should it pass, agrees to take 10% of the 2,500 units, roughly 250 units, and put them in their precinct. That's not a heavy order to ask. If we are being asked to do it in East Milton, which is the densest part of town, why shouldn't everybody take a fair share of the weight? Only seems right to me. Seems like it's time for people to put their money where their mouth is a little bit. I recall when there was some talk about moving some of the stuff out of East Milton into Precinct Two. There was a lot of pushback from Precinct Two with regard to more units and going in. And as the old saying goes, some people, I guess, they don't see the light till they feel the heat. Well, you know what, folks? Let's all do this together if that's what this community is really about. I propose 10% in each precinct should that pass. Thank you for listening. Do I get a second? I don't know how this really works. I'm not a parliamentarian. A second? There you go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And you're doing an excellent job. And as the old saying goes, never volunteer for anything, I think. But that's...
So, well... I'm not sure... Excuse me, sir. Is that... I'm not sure I can... That we can take that motion. 10% within every district?
In every precinct, yes.
So, let's take that as your recognition of the body. But we really haven't had much discussion and debate yet. So, at the appropriate time, you might want to come back up to look for a motion.
I'm not leaving. I'm just waiting for it.
All right. Hey, folks, I know we have... Mr. Kelly, I know you're waiting, and I know we have somebody over here also. But in discussing these issues, which the Planning Board has spent a tremendous amount of time on, I know they have a brief presentation. They've asked to present it, and with the hard work that they do, I believe it's appropriate to recognize the Planning Board right now. And everyone else waiting? Everyone else waiting, you will get your chance to speak. There's no issue there.
We're the sponsors of the bill. We have a presentation.
Ah, all right. I apologize. That's a good point. We'll have the sponsors do it, and then the Planning Board. Mr. Kelly, you're going to be third. Okay. And yes, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Karen Friedman Hanna, and I live at 3 Norway Road, and I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Two. And I'm the first signer on the citizens petition. For the past few years, we in Town Meeting have been hearing from the Select Board, the Warrant Committee, and the Planning Board that the Planning Board just needs more time to develop a plan that's both compliant and right for our town. In fact, I think the warrant says that again. Many of us, including me, were watching their meetings closely, and we're thrilled that the Planning Board, after many months of hard work, created and voted to submit a compliant 25% plan to Town Meeting by a four-to-one margin. Member Oldfield abstained from the vote on May 8th, only to be disappointed in the reversing of their vote the following meeting on May 13th, again with a four-to-one vote, with Member Taggias voting no. I received more emails and phone calls from constituents of mine in Precinct Two, which is along the Elliott Street Corridor, being confused and upset by the Planning Board's unexpected decision. The predominance of people I have spoken to continue to feel the 25% compliant plan is the legal and fiscally responsible plan. Hence, this petition was initiated to allow Town Meeting to vote on it. Let me be clear, this is not a new plan developed by me or the other citizens who put this forward. It is the compliant 25% plan that was developed by the Planning Board in conjunction with the hired expert consultants from UTIL that the Planning Board originally voted to put forth to Town Meeting, but then revoked and opted to only put forth the non-compliant 10% plan that they created. We just got notification again this week from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or HLC, reiterating that the 10% plan being put forth is not compliant and therefore not a legal option. It is the fiduciary and legal responsibility of every elected official, including Town Meeting, Select Board, Warrant Committee, and Planning Board, to comply with the law. Or, as was previously said, it's required... or, as was previously said, it's required by law. All attempts to modify our standing as an MBTA rapid transit community have failed. We must follow the law, and we have until July 14th to do it. This has already cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, money which we do not have. Ongoing frivolous costs because of our noncompliance will wipe out a portion of the benefit that we just received from a huge override that was needed just for basic-level funded services. That's not okay. This plan that the Planning Board worked on for months with the hired expert consultants may not be perfect, but it is a good one. If there needs to be changes to it, those can occur through future Town Meeting votes. Several towns have modified their plans after they were initiated. If the law miraculously changes and our designation changes, then we can modify our plan. Please keep in mind that this is explicitly a zoning plan, not a mandate to build. It took into consideration the concerns from East Milton residents and redistributed the zoning to several parts of town, most of which are near the various forms of public transportation, including the trolley, the bus line, and the commuter rail. It allows for us to get credit for the various 40B projects and other building projects that are already underway or about to begin, and significantly reduces the risk for additional 40Bs. It allows for mixed use, which will potentially bring very necessary additional revenue and businesses to various parts of the town. It will help with environmental issues by promoting use of public transportation and increased walkability to businesses. And very importantly, it allows us to maintain control over what's being built rather than it being imposed on us. Out of the 177 cities and towns that this law applies to, 137 already are compliant. Just tonight, Ducksbury voted to make it happen as well. Thirty-five additional towns that are considered adjacent have until December 31st to comply and are anticipated to do so. These communities are all making this work, and the time is now for us to do so as well. My cohort, Dr. Kyle Johnson, will provide additional details through a slide presentation. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman-Hanna, can I see you for a minute while, sir, you're recognized?
All right, get out your phones. We're going to make this fun. Kyle Johnson, Town Meeting Member of Precinct Ten. I am one of the signers of the petition, and I'm here to introduce you to the article, where it comes from, and why it has received the endorsement of the citizens' petition. And we can go ahead to the next slide. As my colleague just shared, Milton has a July deadline for compliance with the MBTA Communities Act, and as a refresher, that act is an update to Massachusetts zoning law, 40A. The Supreme Judicial Court has upheld the constitutionality of the law, including the regulations, which are developed by the Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or HLC, to whom the law gives the power to determine what compliance means in different contexts. The Supreme Judicial Court has explicitly upheld their power to do so, as have other courts. Now, you may hear tonight that we could potentially fight this classification in court. We have made multiple attempts, many towns have made attempts, many towns have made arguments about classification, and they have all been shot down. This is the law. We know the consequences, and it's not hypothetical like it was in December of 2023. We've faced nearly $1 million so far in legal costs and lost grants, and this next round of litigation, if we face it, is likely to be worse. The last litigation ended with this extension that we received until July, but the courts have made it clear the Attorney General absolutely has the right to go after us for injunctive relief, which could end in court-imposed fines, to the worst-case scenario of an appointed special master that will create zoning for us. So as was just shared, the Planning Board had designed two plans, a 10% plan and a 25% plan. The 10% plan does not comply with the regulations of the law. The 25% plan does. They passed, both agreed to send both to Town Meeting, and then, at the very last minute, rescinded the 25% plan. We, as residents, filed a petition to put that plan verbatim back on the agenda for tonight, and so that's what we afforded tonight. We can go to the next slide. We believe that the 25% plan is the right decision for Milton. It protects our financial future by avoiding costly litigation. It keeps us eligible for grants. It attracts new property tax revenue. It includes mandatory mixed use, which brings commercial tax revenue. In fact, many studies show that mixed-use development is one of the most effective ways for a town to improve its financial stability. It's also important to note that reporting a 25% plan does not box us into a corner. We can change the zoning. Several towns have already done so. They have remained compliant, but they have made adjustments to the details of their zoning. And finally, this isn't just about following the law. We feel the plan makes smart housing and planning choices, and I'm going to get into the details here in just a moment. Next slide, please. It's important that our conversation be grounded in facts and data, and not feelings or fears. The data on the fiscal impact of multifamily housing is very clear and very unequivocal. One important reference is as Literature Review reviewing studies across multiple towns across the country, noting that multifamily housing has a positive fiscal impact on towns across the country. It also found that mixed-use development in particular, which this plan mandates in several subdistricts, is especially helpful for towns to improve their revenue. Specific studies in Massachusetts municipalities have confirmed exactly the same finding. I also found of note this helpful analysis by a researcher in Stonem, who noted that multifamily housing actually helps towns better pay for their education costs because it increases tax revenue significantly without significantly increasing the number of school-age children compared to single-family zoning. So it tends to be a very positive revenue-to-expense ratio for towns. And now the next plan. Sorry, the next slide. So what is this plan? And we'll go ahead to the next one as well. Before, tonight, you'll hear a few amendments to the plan, and I'll just mention them briefly, highlight them. One is simply to fix a typo, a copying error, needs to change the name of the streets in one of these sections. Two is a change that is required by the HLC, the governing body that oversees town compliance. They gave us feedback on the plan and noted this change needed to be made. And then the third is just to attach a color copy of the zoning map instead of the black-and-white map that was included in the first copy. Now to the next. Some have suggested that passing a new compliant plan undermines the voice of the people when they voted no last year. On the contrary, this is fulfilling exactly what voters asked for and were promised on numerous occasions. In 2023, the Warrant Committee recommended a no vote on the 2023 plan with the understanding that the Planning Board would provide a compliant, fully compliant, plan in a few months in order to avoid conflict with the state. The no campaign explicitly told their voters that their goal was for the town to consider and vote on a new and better plan. And in February 2024, voters voted no under that premise and under that promise made multiple times by multiple members. In both cases, the Planning Board had promised this plan by May of 2024. It did not arrive until April of 2025, but it is the plan before you tonight as Article Six. And this is not about criticizing anyone.
Excuse me, sir.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
Of course.
But it's been called to my attention that you're using a Town Meeting Member's name on the slide, who did not provide permission to do so, so I just wanted to share that with the body. You may continue.
Okay. I'll just note it's from a public news article publication. I'm happy to find the reference later.
I'm just trying to maintain decorum. Let's continue.
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. In fact, this plan very carefully incorporates the feedback given over the past couple of years. It is more equitably balanced across town. It is more transit-focused. It would bring a lower impact on the town, and it only permits modest changes to neighborhoods. Next slide, please. In terms of being more balanced, the 2023 plan had 43% of the capacity or 55% of the net new capacity in East Milton. That has been adjusted now to 15% or 19% respectively. The Elliott Street Corridor has absorbed a small amount of that density. That was, again, in response to community feedback that the transit corridor should have the majority of the zoning. And then, in order to continue to take more pressure off East Milton, districts were added in Randolph Ave. area, Fairmount, and the Paper Mill Site. Next slide, please. In terms of being more transit-focused, 78% of the zoning is in the transit area. .5-mile is the radius that is required under the regulations. Only 50% is what's required, and so this zones 78%. And even in areas that are not explicitly within that radius, several are nearby. The Paper Mill District, for example, is not within the .5-mile radius but is very close to the Fairmount Commuter Rail Station. Next slide, please. It has a lower impact by taking advantage of existing multifamily housing, and this is a complicated point, if you haven't been following, may not be obvious. Although the law says we must increase by 25%, we are allowed to take credit for multifamily housing that already exists. So the planners, the Planning Board, did a very careful job of incorporating as much as they could in order to reduce the net new actual units that are being zoned for. More or less makes sense? You're with me? So the net new in 2023 was around 2,000. In this new plan, it is around 1,500. That is a 25% reduction. And in practice, if every single unit were built, which is unlikely, but if every single one were built, it would represent a 15% increase in total homes. So it's important to have that number in addition to 25 rolling around in your head. Next, please. It only allows modest changes. The majority of geography is capped at three-family homes. It is more restrictive than our current single-family zoning in many respects. Site plan review is required for anything that is built, the stringent site plan review that we approved as Town Meeting in the last meeting. The plan is designed to reduce the likelihood of 40Bs, and it provides opportunities to resident owners to redevelop their own property. Next slide, please. So that is the map. I'll also mention that UTIL, who helped, worked with the Planning Board on designing this plan, who vetted it carefully before it was prepared as an article, is here to answer specific, more technical questions, so they are available to do that, and we can help facilitate that. That is the detailed map, and if you had been following along, and I'll give you the QR code again, there's a place where you can see the map more closely and an interactive version of it as well. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all these, but this is a breakdown of why some of the different districts were chosen, and I will say a hopefully welcomed statement in defense of the Planning Board. I know anytime we might see a map like this, automatically, all of us have the initial reaction, "Well, why didn't you put it here, and why did you put that there, and you make that a little bigger?" All good questions that I know the Planning Board has welcomed and listened to over the past several years, but I do want to emphasize that each choice was made in balancing hundreds of different factors, trying to be compliant with the law, choose things that make the most sense for us. So nothing was chosen arbitrarily. Of course, we can talk about what things maybe we think could be better and talk about that over years, but the choices were made very carefully and intentionally, and that's kind of a highlight of some of the major reasoning behind each district. And then the final slide. Thank you. If you want more resources, you can look at the interactive map through that QR code that is available to you, and, as I said, UTIL is here to answer more technical questions, and, of course, we can answer other questions as well.
Thank you, sir. Folks, I just want to point out, I want to point out, when I read the first paragraph of Article Six, at the very end of it, it talks about a overlay district boundary map dated, and it's all X's. The date is, in fact, May 13th, 2025, just to correct that. Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to this motion?
Is there a question?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Chairman of our Planning Board, you're recognized. Meredith Hall.
Karen's going to pull up the presentation for Article Five, so you can see the difference. And when you were looking at the numbers, I think some of the questions that you'll need to be asking are, again, what is the impact? What does this look like, the number of units? And, again, what is defensible legally? And this is our explanation that we'll be presenting.
We're still in the discussion.
We are still considering Article Six, and the Planning Board has recognized to make their remarks, and Chair of the Planning Board is taking those remarks.
Presenting the difference in the information in the Five and Six, which will be useful to the Town Meeting on voting for Six.
Yeah, thank you. Again, the Planning Board, who is primary responsibility for these types of articles, had asked me to make this presentation and said it's pointing out the differences, and I feel that is appropriate. Continue.
And we can move through this quickly, I promise, so. This is what a 10%, the adjacent community plan and the information that it's based on, and the difference of the numbers and the calculations table, which you have not seen yet for Article Six. I would hope that you would want to know the number of units per each district in Article Six, and this is the difference. Again, the purpose of the MBTA Communities' multi-family overlay district, to allow multifamily housing as a right in accordance with Section 3A of the Zoning Act, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A. The zoning provides for, as a right, multifamily housing to accomplish the following goals: to meet the housing local needs alongside the full range of incomes, promoting social and economic diversity in the stability of individuals and families living in Milton; ensure that new multifamily housing creation is harmonious with the existing community; provide a wide range of housing alternatives to meet Milton's diverse housing needs; promote smart growth development by citing multifamily housing adjacent to transit or in areas where existing commercial and civic amenities and infrastructure already exist; and last for to increase the municipal tax base through private investment in new residential development. Next. And this is our plan. So this is what the districts would look like under this. You have Granite Ave. North, the Paper Mill Site, Blue Hill Ave. Station, Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, Elliott Street Corridor, and 7-Eleven Randolph. These are all mapped throughout town, and you can see the geographic locations of Blue Hill Ave. and Fairmount that are in proximity here. Commuter rail stations. So this is, these are the three commuter rail stations that we have, the Reedville, Fairmount, and Blue Hill Ave., in their proximity to Milton. And the total gross commuter rail station area is 74 acres. This is the total acreage in Milton that falls with a half-mile buffer of commuter rail stations. The current use of the 149 parcels, it is predominantly single-family, 116 single-family parcels, 22 family parcels, 13, which are residential condo, eight units or greater multifamily housing, DCR land, vacant or institutional. So therefore, the developable land within the commuter rail stations is precisely 37.5 acres. That's after subtracting the land. Almost exactly half the commuter rail station area remains developable. Next. Okay. So this is what's very important to see when you're looking at the districts, and this will, we'll go through this just quickly later, but I just, what's really important is when you look at the number of units, when you're looking, what is the unit capacity? So we have a unit capacity of Granite Ave. North, 183 units here. The Paper Mill Site has a capacity of 179 zoned units. Blue Hill Ave. Station would have a capacity of 183. The Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, a capacity of 143. These are very different when you look at the 25% plan and what those numbers look like. The Elliott Street... The Elliott Street Corridor, Tier 1, 81 units. Elliott Street Corridor, Tier 2, 42 units. Elliott Street Corridor, Tier 3, 45 units. Tier 4 on Elliott Street, 18 units. And Elliott Street Corridor, Tier 5, 36 units. And lastly, Randolph Ave, 97 unit capacity, for a total of 1,007, meeting the adjacent community compliant target of 985. So the dimensional standards, what are the differences that you're looking at between the 10% and the 25%? Okay. Granite Ave, this is a total area of 3.8 acres, 2.8 acres, which is developable. Next. These are sort of the maps, so you can visualize, and these are the parameters. So this is what the minimum lot size required on Granite Ave is none. There is a maximum stories of six, six stories, or 75 feet. Minimum open space, 30%. Maximum units per acre, 48. Minimum frontage, none. Front yard setback, 30 feet. Side yard setback, you're looking at minimum setback 10 feet, or on both sides, 20 feet. Rear yard setback, maximum, rear yard setback, 20. Maximum floor area ratio, 1.1. This is the Paper Mill site, so you all can see that on a map. I don't know if you've been able to see a zoomed-in map of these locations. This is 3.5 acres, 2.7 acres is developable of this. This lot size, it's a minimum lot size, there is not one. Height, six stories in this location, 75 feet maximum height. Minimum open space, 30%. Maximum units per acre, 48. Minimum frontage, none. Side, front yard setback, 20 feet. Side yard setback, again, minimum side setback would be 10 feet in this location, minimum sum of both sides, 20 feet. And rear yard setback, 30 feet, with a maximum floor area ratio of 1.1. Next. The Blue Hill Ave Station, this is where this is located. Most of you know Uncutty House, this is in that area. Next, this is fully within the commuter line. This would be the Blue Hill Ave Station, lot size, minimum of 5,000 square feet. So this is the difference you'll start to see between the 25% and the 10% is some of the lot size minimums. The lot area per additional unit square footage, 1,000. Height, six stories, maximum feet, 75 stories. Minimum open space, 40%. Maximum units per acre, 45. Minimum frontage, none. On this, front yard setback, 15 feet. Side yard setback, minimum side setback of 5 feet. Minimum sum of both sides, setback, 20 feet. Rear yard setback, 30 feet, with a maximum floor area ratio of 1.1. We tried to keep all of the floor area ratios similar to the character and what exists in context of the site as is. This is the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor, which is partially within the Blue Hill Ave commuter rail station. See this? And then, the minimum lot size here is greater. In the 25% plan, it's actually a 6,000 minimum lot size. We have a 7,000 here. Height, stories is two and a half stories, with a maximum height of 35 feet. Minimum open space, there's a 50% open space here. With our plan, maximum units per acre, 30. Minimum frontage, 50 feet. Front yard setback, 20 feet. Side yard setback, minimum side setback is 5. Minimum sum of both sides setbacks, 20. Rear yard setback, 20. Maximum floor area ratio, .5. Next. And this is the Elliott Street Corridor, which, one of the goals of the planning board is to minimize the impact along the Elliott Street Corridor. This is a highly densely already developed, built-out neighborhood, and we were really concerned about the impact along this area. As you can see, yes, right there, yep, you can just see how this follows, and you'll see the significant difference between this and the 25. Minimum lot size, again, 7,000 for the 10% plan. The 25% plan has 6,000 square foot minimum here. Height, two and a half stories, feet, 35 stories. Minimum open space, 40%. Maximum units per lot, three units, three units per lot on a 7,000 square feet or more. Minimum frontage, 50 feet. Front yard setback, 15 feet. Side yard setback, minimum side setback, 5 feet. Minimum sum of both sides, 20. Rear yard setback, 20. And then, the maximum floor area ratio, this is similar, we broke it out, the FAR to control the building size is similar in the 25%. So 6,000 to 7,900 square feet is .50. We would have a minimum of 7,000. But lots, 8,000 to 9,900, .38. 10,000 to 12,000, roughly, .3. 12,000 to roughly 14,000, .25. And lots, 14,000 square feet or more, .21. Next. Does 7-Eleven Randolph Ave?
Excuse me, Chairman. So I'm getting questions from town meeting members, which seem legitimate. I certainly recognize that Article 5, let's call it the 25% plan, I mean, excuse me, Article 6, the 25% plan, is basically submitted by citizens, but it was basically mostly a copy of what the planning board had put together sometime previous, and you asked to speak to that. Some town meeting members are getting confused, they feel that the points that you're making really have to do with the 10% plan. So if you could clarify that.
That is correct, yes, if I could clarify. So the 25% plan that the citizens are using is information that the planning board studied, without a doubt, and UTL, our consultant, studied. The problem is, when we looked at the impact to the Milton Village, which you'll see is a tremendous number of units in the Milton Village, and in other areas along the Elliott Street Corridor especially, those impacts were what caused us to say, "You know what? We find this to be too much density," and why we reverted and went back to the 10% plan. So it's the amount of density in the 25%, and this is why it is much more favorable, and when you see the districts, you'll see the difference that's presented in a 25% plan in the number of units. The other thing to differentiate is, the planning board has worked for years, working on the Lower Mills, Milton Village overlay zoning. So we do not have that, we do not have that in our plan, because this MBTA, the 25%, why would anybody want to work with the overlay zoning when it would be much easier to go with an MBTA plan and bypass all the guidelines and all the work that the planning board had done in those overlay districts? So, this would be, the 25% would be a third layer on top of our overlay zoning. So we purposely did not include the Milton Village area, because that has already been zoned with multifamily housing, and so...
And Madam Chairman, in the interest of time, is it safe for me to...
We're almost finished.
No, it's okay. Is it safe for me to assume that many of the points you're making here will save you from making those points when we consider Article 5?
Completely, completely, yes. Okay, so 7-Eleven Randolph Ave, we'll just run through these. Height, two and a half. Maximum, height, 35 feet. Minimum open space, 40%. Maximum units per acre, 12. Minimum frontage, 50%. Front yard setback, 30 feet. Side yard setback, minimum side setback is 15 feet, or 30 feet on both sides. Rear yard setback, maximum floor area, the rear yard setback would be 30.7 FAR on this. And I believe that's our last slide. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I hope you will be receiving that same information on Article 6, because I think a lot of that information has not been provided to you, and it would be helpful for you to recognize that.
I see we have several other members waiting to speak to address Article 6. Typically, we line up first here, so since you were sitting there, although I don't, Mr. Kelly, were you waiting earlier?
I'll go.
All right, we'll go with Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you're recognized. You can ask the moderator.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, was there a motion made? I have recognized Mr. Kelly for his presentation.
I have no idea, but I asked the moderator, and I submitted the information, and so whether it's on the town website or not, I have no idea. Did you check?
All right, so...
Was it there? I'm going to show you some information from the...
Hold on, hold on. One minute, Mr. Kelly. and audio clips, and others, Word documents being submitted, and there was some legitimate confusion. Mr. Kelly did make every attempt to get everything in at the appropriate time. We may not have gotten it appropriately on the website, but I'm going to rule that he can continue with his presentation.
I just want to make sure the control booth is ready. Okay, all right. I'm going to, I am one of the 16 taxpayers that filed suit against the state of Massachusetts regarding this classification. I have a recording, we have about a four-minute clip from the trial this week, and I thought it was important that the body sees what the judge said about the classification and about what's going on. We have a unique situation in Milton that may be different from all the other communities, and so it's important that you understand what the concern was with the judge, and what the response was from the Assistant Attorney General, Eric Haskell. Appreciate your time. This is the transcript, I'm going to try to keep this lined up with the audio. It's hard to hear the judge, so if you can be, I don't think he had his mic on, you'll hear all the other speakers.
We're just arguing that we shouldn't be forced fed into 25% when we could be adjacent community and have 10%. Why are they going after us individually and making us have 25%? Creating a density that's equal to some of the biggest cities and towns.
Let's ask Attorney Haskell that, because being familiar with the area, I'm wondering how it would fit much more in that particular area than is our neighborhood. Like, what's the available land? And if it's just a paper exercise, as we talked about in the last call in these cases, where's, I mean, pretty dense area beginning.
So, as your Honor knows well, from time spent with these issues, the exact acreage and unit capacity, as well as the proportion of acreage and unit capacity that need to be within a half-mile of a transit station, are calculated individually as to each municipality, based on things like developable area, and excluding wetlands and institutional land, and existing housing units, and so on and so forth. And so, Milton being categorized as rapid transit community, they're required to put half of their 3A multifamily district within a half-mile of these Madison Trolley stops. As we've...
Where would they go for them?
Well, Your Honor, that's really up to the town to identify the locations that it feels best, and that's really the feature of this MBTA Communities program. HLC decides, based on things like the level of transit service and the benefit that the community gets from that, what category they fall into, and they tell them, based on your level of transit service and your category, here's what you need to do, but the town decides.
It's not like the middle borough, there's a common in around the station, right? There's not a lot of land, available land there.
There's certainly a lot of land, Your Honor. Now, some of it is developed already.
So that's just inviting them to redevelop. It's really the end result, is it changes the community?
It does, no doubt, and that's the intention of this law. If the town chooses to place its district on land that's already developed, and so the implication is it perhaps might be developed, the town can make that choice, and the town can place, you know, things like site plan review and setback requirements to channel that as they want to.
Back requirements around there?
And that is...
Has anyone from that office ever walked through that part of Milton?
I am familiar with that part of Milton, Your Honor. When I ride my bicycle into Boston, as I do once a week or so, it takes me right through that neighborhood. And so, what you see here is...
You didn't write the regulations and come up with the numbers.
I'm sorry, Your Honor.
You didn't do the regulations and come up with the numbers.
I didn't, no.
developable station area, those stations have lots of undeveloped land, like he mentioned, Middleborough. So when they put the housing in there, it's not disrupting an existing neighborhood. In Milton, because they deemed the trolley rapid transit, the developable station area is all along Elliott Street. And that's where we have to put 50% of the units. So whether you go with a 25% plan or the 10% plan, we need to pack 50% of whatever the total number is into those units. You can sense the judge was a little disappointed that this is land that's already developed, which means we are going to be pitting some neighbors against other neighbors. Some people in this room actually own homes on the Elliott Street area that they're gonna have an opportunity to sell at a premium price, most likely, because a lot of developers are interested in Milton. And so if you were one of the first ones to get out, good for you, but some of your neighbors are neighbors that aren't in the zone but about the zone, might be looking at a bigger building beside them. They might have the sun blocking their garden. I have a garden, I know what it's like. They may have solar panels that don't work anymore and they still have a contractual obligation to keep paying. This is not a simple thing. Then I did a little more research. And this, I just. Well, if you, I can just go to the states. If you go to the state site, I apologize. If you go to the state site, you go to MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, they are the ones that are really coordinating this whole onslaught about the MBTA Communities Act. So the challenge, if you look at the site, they're gonna say the work that we do, and then you page down till it says, it tells about MBTA. You click on it, there's a full-blown, over 100 people that work for this organization. They are working with all the housing advocates, they're working with CHAPA. You can go to the CHAPA website. They host CHAPA's content on the state site. They have slides available for the people that want the town to have this zoning. So they provide all this stuff free of charge. It's unbelievable that we are even this far in this discussion, the amount of material that they've produced. But it's also overwhelming and sometimes too much information makes it hard to have clarity. So if you read it, they have come out with a project, we talk about Project 2025, you're familiar with that, some of you in this room. They have a project called 2050, I believe it's called, 20, yeah, 2050. And if you read it, it's about a home for everyone. And matter of fact, I'm gonna go right down. So here's the site, our work, MBTA Section 3A resources. What kind of resources do they have? You can see over here, all the resources. They even have a toolkit so that you can fight people like me, and they give you messaging, they tell you what to say. They have community outreach, they have navigating town meeting, downloadable materials. But that's not the big thing. The big thing is we go over here, the state of Mass has a, let's see, a home, okay, a home for everyone, a home for everyone. I'm not over my 10 minutes. It'd be nice if you'd be respectful to me, I'm being respectful to you.
All right, let me interrupt. So we allow 10 minutes for town meeting members to make comments, but we allow up to 20 minutes when they have a presentation, and that's what.
I'm not doing that, okay? I'm not taking that long. But listen, the, so they worked with Tufts University and they brought them in, they teamed up with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and they came up with a report called Zoning for Livable Communities. And when they, it talks about all the different things that they have in mind, because this isn't, this is just the beginning. And CHAPA, CHAPA is the one that in 1968 came out with the 40B. A lot of communities have reached their goal by now, so this is the new 40B. It takes place of the, it works in conjunction. This is what I call the perfect storm. We have the MBTA Communities Act, we have 40B, and we have the accessory dwelling units. Those accessory dwelling units that you're gonna go up around town all count towards increasing your 40B requirements. You also have the ADUs, the 40Bs. Now, the MBTA, the more units you have in town, the more 40B you have to have. And that can be anywhere in town, not just in the zoning area that we have put the MBTA. So we have a confluence of factors that they have built in intentionally. In a couple of years, in 2027, 6,000 or 7,000 units come off the rolls as affordable housing. The state talks about how much money, if you look at the Home for Everyone brochure, and if you want to email, I'll get it to the town website for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly, if you could wrap up your remarks.
What you will see, that if you read the amount of homes that they want, that they need, they tell you in the document that they only need 100,000 homes over the next 10 years. Everything else is speculative, like they're looking for people to go on a home. My son and daughter bought a home together, they live in the same building. If one of them wanted to leave, there's a home for them. There's the home for everybody. It's really, if you read it and you understand what they're talking about, there is no way we could fund this. It's impossible, it's like a pipe dream. There was a movie with Rick Gervais a couple of years ago about lying. He was the only person in town that could lie. So he told people he was God, and they all came to his meeting, and they said, what happens after death? And he said, everybody gets a mansion. This is like telling everybody, it says, if you wanna have a home or you wanna rent, we have that for you, no matter what your income was in any community. They are taking away driving, this is transit-oriented development. They, right now with this bill we're about to pass, in East Milton, Falcone could change to an MBTA zoned property, or he will be one, and he can increase the units there to 139 units, and he doesn't have to put one parking spot in there. Think of that when you go to Fitness Unlimited. It's unbelievable, and you talk about commercial space and you're all excited about it. What is the commercial space in the Henry's Building?
Excuse me, Mr. Kelly, it's in the interest of time, can you wrap up?
It's a nail salon. The 7-Eleven went out of business, nail salon, they're putting in. There is no minimum square footage requirement for the commercial space in the MBTA Communities Act. Did you know that? So Falcone could put a 750-square-foot unit.
Mr. Kelly, you're no longer recognized, thank you.
And the rest could be parking.
Mr. Furr, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Furr, Precinct 2. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm, as many of you know, I'm no longer a town meeting member since I moved into the MBT district by moving to Central Avenue recently. I just wanted to speak for a couple of reasons. One is I was on the planning board for a while in this town, was a town meeting member for a long time. I'm also a real estate developer, so I feel like I bring some ideas to this topic and just wanted to share them with you without necessarily taking a position on 10 or 25. So the first point I wanna bring up is one that I've made many times before this body, and it's the fact that we, as a town, have a right to, hopefully have a right to have some say in what happens. As Mr. Kelly was just saying, we would like to be able to dictate the character of what happens in our town, not the state. Many, many years ago, the state imposed 40B, which I am not a big supporter of. What that does is it allows the state to pretty much unilaterally allow real estate developers to override local zoning and change the character of a town to get what they want, to produce housing units. Milton has many, many times had to put, has seen developers use that law as a weapon and then had to reactively come up with some creative zoning to come up with a compromised project. And over the last several years, we've been unsuccessful in being able to do that. And we have almost 100 units going up in East Milton with zero public amenity. We have another, almost 90 units going up on Blue Hill Avenue in a former estate because a developer came in and used 40B and was able to just basically get what they wanted. And we were lucky to get any input on that project. We have, I think it's almost 30 units going up on Brush Hill Road in front of Curry College. All of these projects are happening because the state allowed basically comprehensive zoning to come in and overrule. That's what's going to happen again if we don't take some opportunity here to have guidelines that comply with this act. It's state law, you can love it, you can hate it. But unless it changes and unless we take the steps to govern our own character, the state is going to do it for us. Number two, excuse me, I think it's important to talk about zoning not being building. We're hearing a lot about having to put 50% of the units somewhere. We have to zone for the units, but there's an economic reality in some of these districts. The fact that Elliott Street is extremely dense will actually discourage the production of many of these units. You're looking at a district that has many, many small lots owned by individuals with buildings that are out of the setbacks that are being proposed by this zoning. The economic reality of taking those buildings down, when you put the financial basis of buying them and then having to build a smaller footprint, is math that doesn't math. So just because we're zoning for it doesn't mean it's going to get built. If it doesn't make sense for the developer to build it, they won't. We learned that with the Ice House. We put zoning in place that we thought was so smart at the Ice House. But the reality is, we made it so restrictive that we got a 40B instead because the math didn't math. So I understand we're putting 2,500 units on the docket here, but a lot of them are never gonna see the light of day because the basis of buying the properties to build those units will just make them impossible. The last thing I wanna just quickly touch on is something that I've been seeing a lot during this whole process. I've gone to a lot of the meetings, whether virtually or in person on this topic because of my affinity for planning. And I've seen a theme here where people are coming up with hypotheses of how many things are gonna get built, or how many kids are gonna be in the school district. And I respect the thought and the time that is going into those studies because it's both difficult to come up with the rationale, and it takes time, away from families, and in many cases, it's well thought out. But in reality, it's theory. And we're paying experts a lot of money. These are people who are studies, studiers of planning, they have the resources, they have the technology. Let's let the data dictate. Let's not have people running around throwing out theories about how many kids are gonna be in the school. Let's look at the data because that is what we should be making decisions based on, not theory of what we think. Let's listen to the experts. Again, thank you, I wish I could be here voting tonight and hope to be back again.
Thank you. Excuse me, in the front row here? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Good evening. My name's Brian O'Halloran and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 3. Publicly available data shows us to understand the differences between how our elected body represents our constituents with regard to the MBTA Communities Act. We rarely get such a unique opportunity to use real data to examine our effectiveness as a representative body. Next slide, please. A special town meeting on December 11th in 2023, members voted to adopt a 25% zoning plan with the most comprehensive zoning changes in 100 years. Subsequently, a successful and historic signature drive, collecting nearly 3,000 signatures, forced a town-wide referendum to allow all the voters in Milton an opportunity to help decide on the zoning article. On February 14th, 2024, the residents of Milton voted overwhelmingly by 54% to reject that zoning article. It's from these events, we are now able to analyze just how well we, as representatives of the residents in the town of Milton, did in the performance of our duty as town meeting members. Next slide. We had one job and we failed. Here we see data taken from town meeting voting records, as well as referendum voting records by precinct. Along the X-axis, we have each one of the 10 town precincts, and along the Y-axis, we have the percentage of no votes, broken down in blue for how citizens voted on the zoning article on February 14th, and in red on how town meeting members voted on December 11th. For example, in my precinct 3, in red, we see 31% of the town meeting members voted no, and in blue, we see 48% of voters in the precinct 3 voted no. This is a dramatic difference of 17%. You can see red and blue dotted lines across, showing the averages across all precincts. 32% of town meeting members voted no, and 54% of voters in precincts voted no. I'm gonna take a few seconds for y'all to take a peek. Please look at your precinct. Next slide. Here we see the same data in tabular format, for those of you that like to look at things in table format. Next slide, please. In addition to the obvious differences in each precinct, we can see from the data that there are some important highlights. Collectively, town meeting members and voters differed significantly by 22% overall. We see that 32% of town meeting members voted no as compared to 54% of the residents. We weren't off by 1% or 5% or even 10%. We were off by 22%. A greater percentage of voters voted no in all precincts, except one, when compared with town meeting members, member votes. The greatest difference was in Precinct 6, with a 35 percentage point difference between voters and town meeting member. Please back up two slides, please. So what conclusions can we draw from this data? Firstly, as an elected body, on this issue, on the zoning article, clearly, we do not represent our constituents. Secondly, our constituents want and expect this process to play out. They don't want a 25% plan.
to vote this motion in front of us, this article, before we go home tonight. And we, we will, we typically, town meeting wraps up between 10:30 and 11:00. I think the reasonable goal, I see one member waiting to speak over there and four members waiting to speak here. If, oh, there's, there's more there, there's three there. Okay, so again, if there's anyone else that wishes to speak, I wish you would wait down front and I'd encourage all of the remaining speakers to be expedient so that we can, we can bring this vote tonight while everyone's had a chance to listen to the whole thing. And with that, Ms. Swinson, I believe you're next. Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Okay, so let me, let me explain. Robust rules of order in town meeting time differed pretty dramatically on what it means when you move the question. Here in Milton's town meeting, when you move the question, in fact, it's reduced to five minutes and everyone speaks once before they could speak again. It's no, not too different. I, I heard someone yell three minutes, that, that would be, it's not part of our regular rules, it would take a little bit. So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to ask the remaining speakers to make, keep their, their comments to three to five minutes and... Oh, do you have a, do you have a presentation? Yeah, if you have a presentation, they have permission before the meeting started to, we allow them for 10 minutes. So that's not going to change, folks. They got them in time. But I think the message is clear from the body. Let's get this moving along to the best that we can. I'm, I'm actually, nope, behind you. I'm sorry. You're recognized.
My name is Christine Hudlin and I represent Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. I live on the Ellis, Elliott Street corridor. It won't be any surprise, I've stood up before, that I am rising to support this article. Many citizens, mostly in precincts six and seven, did vote down the last 25% plan in the referendum and, and, and that was because they didn't like it. The plan has now been reworked by the Planning Board with the experienced people that were offered by the state and we have a new plan here today where the density is more fairly distributed and new areas near commuter transit access have been identified. I'm very much in favor of the MBTA Act that will allow housing for seniors like my husband and me who would like to downsize in a few years. It can also create housing for young families that cannot afford a home here or in the surrounding area. My husband and I purchased a two-family home in Milton in 1984. It has paid for three college, three, three children to go to college and has increased in value beyond our wildest imaginations. We are very fortunate to house two of our children and their families there. Two of the four parents work in the Boston Public Schools and they would like to remain in the area permanently, but their ability to afford a home nearby may never be realized with the current housing stock and the crazy prices. This point was graphically documented and perfectly articulated in the Globe article today discussing the house price to income ratio. I would like to see us change this for them and for our grandchildren and your children and your grandchildren. We just passed a really large override that is only going to provide us level service. Many of our departments have been dependent or enhanced with grants to supplement the town's operating budget. Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask a couple of questions of our town administrator, our town treasurer and the school committee.
Direct the question to me and I'll find the best person to answer it.
How much have we spent from our operating budget and lost in grants since the town meeting's yes vote in December was overturned? What is the cost of lost future grants that are usually counted on to support our budgets if we remain non-compliant?
Ms. Hudlin, if you could, I suspect you've moved on past one question. Let's see if we can get the answers. Do you want me to write all the questions down? That's too timely. Can, can anyone, can our town manager address that first question? Basically, if I summarize it, how much money has lost for grants because we didn't have the compliance?
What's lost in grants are, what, what have we spent so far since we've become non-compliant in any area? What grants have, and that would include grants we lost? I'd also like to know if there's any future grants that were, that the schools would typically count on in their budget that will be not available to us if we remain this way? And has there been any revenue that's been lost?
So let's, let's do our best. Let's start trying to get the answer first on. Yes, sir, you're recognized, our town manager.
Thank you, Nicholas Milano, Town Administrator. In terms of grants that have been impacted by MBTA Communities non-compliance, this information is on the town website. Since the first grant was impacted was a Seaport Economic Council grant that was back in 2024. It's just over $800,000 of grants that the town has applied for and been informed that the town would have received it if it were not for non-compliance. So that's in terms of lost grants. In terms of cost, I think I heard a question to that, there have been certainly legal expenses spent. Has been discussed in, with this body before, $275,000 was the town's arrangement with Goodwin Proctor for the case that went before the Supreme Judicial Court. In addition to that, town council has occasionally incurred expenses on MBTA Communities, which I think was about $45,000 since, again, going back to 2024. Those are the first two. In terms of lost future grants, I think that's a little bit tricky to nail down in terms of what the town may or may not get. We have been awarded and the select board accepted today a grant in the amount of $250,000 from the municipal fiber program that is contingent upon MBTA Communities compliant. If we were non-compliant, presumably they would pull that funding potentially. And there are other grants that we have submitted for recently, including just about a half million dollars for designing infrastructure improvements in East Milton through Massworks, $60,000 grant we submitted for our housing production plan again through the state, which would presumably also be compliant, contingent on continued compliance. But beyond that, those are things that we have applied for. I can't speak to things we may or may not apply for. There are many grant programs out there that may or may not be impacted going forward. I don't know, Chris, I'm sorry, Ms. Hudlin, if there's anything else in terms of my questions?
I think your last question had to be to the, the school department of the schools? I don't, who is our current chair? Thank you. Madam, you're recognized.
Hi, Amanda Cerio, Chair of School Committee, TM, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I ask the moderator to recognize interim Superintendent John Phelan.
Absolutely. Mr. Phelan, you're recognized for purposes of addressing the member's question.
Good evening, John Phelan, Interim Superintendent of Schools, Milton Public Schools. The last fiscal year, thank you very much. The last fiscal year, the school department has lost $196,632 in grants, one being for SEL and behavioral mental health for $150,000, were not able to apply for due to the designation. A second grant, partnerships for reading success for $30,000. A third grant for computer science professional development and devices for $6,000. And the last grant, the fourth grant, Innovation Career Pathways Planning Grant for $10,632, again totaling $196,632. The one grant that may be annually distributed that we would go for again would be the $150,000 for student SEL behavioral and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna go back and forth and see, so madam, you are recognized.
Good evening, Cheryl Taggias, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Nine and a member of the Planning Board. And I have some slides. So while we're waiting for those, there's a lot of discussion about 10% and 25% and even 15%. And there are a lot of questions about how and where this new housing could be added. So to answer these questions, we need to look at the regulations, but we also need to look at the zoning itself. The regs require a multifamily district with an average of 15 units an acre and it must be, it must allow for a total of 2,461 units or 25% of the existing housing stock. It can be made up of sub-districts, half within a half mile of transit stations and half dispersed. These sub-districts can have different standards that control density, size, height and open space. Next, please. This district map takes full advantage of the flexibility in the regs. There are existing multifamily properties within a half a mile of the trolley stations, between Adams Street and Central Ave and at Curtis Road to the west. These, though, are not large enough to meet regs. So areas along Elliott Street and Blue Hills Parkway are needed. To aid with dispersment, a sub-district like the Elliott Street corridor is included near the Fairmount Commuter Rail Station. And then other sub-districts include sites of three 40B projects and office building and a vacant, and a vacant parcel. When existing units in these sub-districts are factored in, the number of new units is about 1,500 or 15% of our housing stock. Next, please. These photos of the Milton Station and Matapan Station sub-districts. The zoning is informed by an analysis of these properties from density to height to open space. Similarly, an analysis of the existing housing stock in the sub-districts that you see here inform the zoning. Much of this area is one and two family housing on modest lot sizes. The zoning here allows three units per lot, which is the minimum that the regs allow. Doing this, though, requires higher densities in other sub-districts. Next, please. Density is not the only standard that controls development. There are a lot of standards listed here and they work together to control how much can be built on a lot and where. Floor area restrictions and open space minimums are included here in this zoning and these are not included in most of our current existing zoning. So these standards are set to match the existing standards and existing built fabric in each of our sub-districts. Next, please. One of these standards is floor area ratio or FAR. It's been discussed a lot and you have charts or tables in the zoning which lay this out. This is what limits building size and it limits it to a percentage of the lot size. So there's multiple tiers so that you can keep the building size approximately the same no matter the lot size. So there's example calculations on the right side of the slide. Building size is held in check at about 3,000 to 3,500 square feet. By comparison, new single-family homes in our new subdivisions average about 4,200 square feet. So what's allowed here is less size but three units than a single-family home in other parts of town. So this example applies these dimensional standards to a hypothetical lot typically in Elliott Street and Fairmount districts where three units are allowed. The zoning allows similar-sized building compared to what exists. The difference is it allows more but smaller units, units that can meet the needs of small households and seniors who are downsizing. Next, please. This building is basically the size of building that can, that would be allowed in these districts. The difference here is this two-family could be converted to a three-family, but it couldn't be enlarged. It's already larger than what this zoning would allow. Next, please. In this larger lot example, there is some opportunity for new development given the dimensions and size of the lot, but the standards keep it to a similar scale. So the zoning is designed to allow targeted incremental development. Next, please. Now we'll get into the multifamily larger districts. In this example, the building has less units than would be allowed in this zoning, but the building is much larger in area than would be allowed. This is due to the compliance model metric, which is set at 1,000 square feet per unit and this building has an average size of over 2,000. There's no financial incentive to redevelop this property, yet the zone capacity counts towards the requirements. The zoning is targeted to get credit for existing multifamily units. We can also use this example to illustrate a point about the compliance model, which is what determines the zone capacity. It is based on a small unit size. So if a larger unit size were used in a development like is typical in this building, but also in many of the others in Milton, it would yield significantly less than 1,500 new units. In this example, this building was built in the 1960s and it is probably ripe for redevelopment under this new zoning. But this is a place that I think many would agree is appropriate for new multifamily housing. So the zoning is targeted to where there is opportunity. Next, please. These are 40B projects that are approved, two of which are under construction. The zoning is targeted to get credit for these units. Next. And I'll close with this. This zoning was informed by two years of study and lots of public comment. It is thoughtful, it's strategic. Let's comply with the law and help ease our region's housing crisis by voting yes on Article Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bustow, you waiting to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, you are recognized.
I guess that's me.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm going back and forth, you'll be next. Sorry for the confusion. This gentleman had a pre-approved small presentation that is apparently being loaded right now.
These are 40B projects that are approved, two of which are under construction. The zoning is targeted to get credit for these units. And I'll close with this. This zoning was informed by two years of study and lots of public comment. It is thoughtful, it's strategic. Let's comply with the law and help ease our region's housing crisis by voting yes on Article 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bustow, you waiting to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, you are recognized.
I guess that's me.
No, ma'am, ma'am. I'm going back and forth. You'll be next. Sorry for the confusion. This gentleman had a pre-approved small presentation. That is apparently being loaded right now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Mark Cristo, 17 Waldo Road. I live in Precinct 2.
And he is a registered voter and has been approved to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Board Select, and Planning Board, Warrant Committee, Town Meeting Members, and members watching from afar as well. I'm here to talk about the trolley and the classification, the core of the argument since day one. Can you hear me okay, too? I don't want to over-shout. It's okay. Thank you. Slide one first. Why would you support a 25% plan? I've asked myself that, and as a Precinct 2 resident, I cannot. The reason, small, single-vessel Matapan trolley with very limited carrying capacity and no ability to transport one passenger downtown, is the heart of a great divide due its ambiguous classification. Slide two, please. Yep, you're there. To fully understand its consequence, let's recall the MBTA's extensive plan to convert the Matapan Trolley to Rapid Transit back in the late 1960s. Ultimately, the MBTA abandoned their plans, and to this day, the trolley has remained unchanged, operating beyond the scope of the Rapid Transit subway system. Those benchmark plans provide critical details showing incorporation of the local route into the subway system, accomplished by pushing the Ashmont Terminus out to Matapan and replacing eight close-distance trolley stops with just two subway stations, enabling vastly improved infrastructure for operationally superior service. For certain, only two stations would result had the conversion to Rapid Transit been realized. The loss of many trolley stops is a necessary byproduct of a conversion to Rapid Transit subway service. Slide three, if I could. I'd like to point out some specifics. Under that scenario, Milton would have lost three of her four trolley stops. There would have been construction of large overhead viaducts to separate the third rail from the road crossings at grade level, and massive train yards would have been built for multitude of heavy rail cars along the Napaunset River and our beautiful Napaunset Bike Way down by the Harvest River Bridge and beyond. However, plans were totally abandoned with the acquisition, the acquisition of a trainyard in South Boston. I'd like to shift gears for a moment and bring up the point that recently, the SJC determined that the legislation, 3A itself, is the law, we understand that, and the AG, the Attorney General, has the ability to enforce compliance. Our town has been challenged, as never expected though, by legislation administered by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. The SJC also determined that HLC did not properly promulgate regulations of which the guidelines that dictate both classification and zoning requirements are a part. HLC has singularly failed Milton. Yes, HLC has failed Milton on a number of occasions, inflicting calamitous harm because of the unfair application of a law. First, they rashly rebranded the Matapan Trolley to Rapid Transit without recognizing the trolley's grave limitations. If I could ask for slide four, please. Then, HLC failed to recognize that Ashmont is the Rapid Transit Terminus, which the diminutive trolley sits entirely beyond and only feeds into like a bus. The trolley should have been struck from that Rapid Transit list immediately at that point. Let's compare the Matapan Trolley and Rapid Transit by a couple of points. Seating capacity of the trolley is 38 seats. It's a single vessel. Rapid Transit has six vessels, each with, I should say, 64 seats, so that did a typo, equating to 384 seats, but it's a tenfold difference. The route's length on the Matapan Trolley, it's two and a half miles long, it's above ground, and it's a semi, has a semi-exclusive right-of-way. The Rapid Transit line is 22 total miles on an exclusive right-of-way with significant subterranean segments. And the transit nodes on the trolley are stops at sidewalk level. On the Rapid Transit, it's secured stations, many of them are multi-mode with parking structures as well. And regarding direct transport for downtown, we all know that trolley does not do that, but all Rapid Transit lines do in fact provide passengers' service directly to downtown. Then, if we could, I'd like to switch to number, slide number five, if I could, and look at the daily ridership. There are dozens to a few hundred on the trolley line at each of the stops. There are thousands to tens, to tens of thousands of passengers that are served on those week, those average daily counts on the Rapid Transit line. So if you look at Braintree with over 4,400 daily passengers, Quincy Center at 7,000, North Quincy 8,400, JFK at 8,000, as you get down by South Station and into downtown, it approaches 14,000, 18,000, and then beyond into Harvard Square. Look at the trolley, we've got 10 at Valley Road, 17 at Capel Street, 196 in Milton, and I think 557 at Central. How significant those weekly boarding differentials are between the trolley and Rapid Transit surface, service? It is obvious to me that the Matapan Trolley has insufficient infrastructure and capacity. It has not the ability to support HLC's most ambitious 25% zoning demand. HLC zoning demand of Milton is inequitable, it's punitive, it's excessive, two and a half times so. Milton should not be tasked to zone to excess by 250% because of the state's ambiguity with regard to a classification. That's absurd. Slide, slide six, I think, please. We should not be putting forth a 25% zoning plan based upon an ambiguous classification that has not yet been challenged. Fairness is paramount. Laws, regulations, guidelines, society, all based upon fairness. Is not fairness the cornerstone of the law? We, as a community, stand alone. Milton is the only community with a classification whose basis is the Matapan Trolley, the only one of 177. This is our fight alone. I don't like to use the word "fight," but it is a fight. Our town deserves closure by way of a long overdue resolution for reclassification so that we can comply. I'm for that. Slide seven, please. I have a question. I don't know, but I'm assuming you might not be aware of the magnitude of HLC's reductions in zoning requirements that were afforded to 90 communities of the 177 municipalities. That's more than half, of which over half of those 90, 48 to be exact, were reduced by 50% and more. HLC enacted 79 classification downgrades and 11 scale adjustments. I put together a listing by what the initial regulation showed and what the new regulations that were released in January, and that was the finding. It's five pages. I've asked my friend Brian O'Halloran to post it on the, I don't know if we could do it, it's not infomercial, but the MNRZ website for review, if you're interested in seeing that. Back to the trolley, if I could, though. As the trolley was never converted to Rapid Transit, it is not Rapid Transit and therefore has no subway stations. Only with conversion could there be stations, and it would be just two stations along the trolley route, with only one in the town of Milton. By deduction, HLC has blatantly over-calculated our developable station area acreage around seven trolley stops. That is stale data that is driving the 25% zoning plan that is based upon a never-converted trolley route. At present, the only subway station is a mile away, and that's the Ashmont Rapid Transit Terminus. Slide eight, if I may. Milton's ambiguous classification remains a massive failure per HLC. This is not on us. Until the court renders a decision about our ambiguous classification and its unfair application, we should not put forth a 25% compliant plan. A 25% plan is unfair, it's punitive, and it's inappropriate. You should not support it. In conclusion, you should only support a 10% zoning plan because we do not have a subway or subway stations, and because the diminutive Matapan Trolley operates independently without superior subway function and capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Good evening. Doug Heim, Precinct 2. I'm tired, hungry, and a little fussy, so I apologize in advance if I don't make a lot of sense. MBTA Communities Act, I don't like it. I don't, I'm particularly concerned about what it's going to do to our community. I have some real fears about that. And I don't think it's fair. Heard that word "fairness" from a number of speakers. It's not fair, right? Saw that in the comments from the Warrant Committee, essentially speaking about fairness and concern for the future. What's it going to do to our town? Is it going to, what is it, change the somewhat rural nature of our town? Fears about traffic, about costs, about everything like that. Fairness, right? Somebody says, "All about fairness." No, it's not, right? If, if you stop me in front of the fruit center with a petition and you say, "Hey, do you think it's fair that Milton has to have, you know, 2,461 units?" I'd say, "No, I'm going to sign that," right? But that's not what we're deciding whether or not we like this law, we're not deciding whether or not we're scared of the ramifications of this law, we're not deciding whether it's fair. It's not how this can be decided, because when I decide whether or not to follow the law, I generally ask, "Is it the law?" Yes, that's the end of my inquiry. It's not, "Do I like it, or am I afraid of it?" It's not, the 3A, the MBTA Communities Act, it's about 245 words, and the EO HLC regulations are 10,580 words. You know how many times fairness is mentioned? Zero. You won't see fairness or unfair, or it's not fair, right? It's not the way the law operates. Now, I had the opportunity to listen to the entire audio of the hearing that the Milton Citizens Petition had last week. And first of all, not going to mention names, but the council who represented the 16 petitioners did a fantastic job. I say that as a practitioner, and just, they did a wonderful job, right? Yeah, absolutely. Didn't mention fairness, because that's not a legal argument. Now, the, the argument is whether or not the classification that we have, a Rapid Transit communication, is arbitrary and capricious or not. That's it, arbitrary and capricious. Do you know what that means? It means if something is arbitrary and capricious, it means it is, quote, from case law, "devoid of reason." Not unreasonable, not, "I disagree with the reason," not, "Let's have two charts and have two pictures of a trolley and a commuter rail and say, hey, what's the difference?" It's devoid of reason. That is a bar that is so high as to become impractical in this case. And we heard a little bit of that audio from when the AG was questioned, the judge was kind of giving it to him and saying, "Hey, fairly, have you even ridden the tea? You know, your bike probably could go faster than it." All fair questions, and the law and the case won't be decided on any of those. As a practitioner, I recognize that. But he was respectful of the arguments because he knows it's important to the people in town. It's how we feel, and I feel it too, but that's not how we decide these things, right? The way that hearing began, the very first words of that hearing, the attorney representing the folks from Milton referenced in a decision that that same judge had made the prior week, where he dismissed all the claims of, I think, eight or nine different municipalities, including the citizens.
Excuse me, sir, if you could wrap up to...
Yep, who argued a number of different things, including categorization. And, and what the, and what the judge said is, "Okay, now you can go ahead and tell me how you think I'm wrong if you want, but I don't know that it's going to have a lot of effect." It's a direct quote from the judge, our counsel. So this case is not going anywhere. And very briefly, three things I want to mention, because I want to end on a positive note. Number one, we have a lot in common. Number one, we're all nerds in this room. And if you think you're not, it's 10:30, you're talking about zoning, so you're a nerd, okay? We also pay attention to these things. So I'm not saying we're any smarter than people that maybe vote in a referendum, but we sit through these meetings, and we know that the way you have to decide this is not on what you think or what you feel or what your definition of fairness is, but it's on what the law is. And the law dictates that we pass a 25% plan, even if we don't like it, even if we're scared of it, and even if we think it's unfair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DeTulio Agostino, Precinct 9. I got it right that time. It is the law. The American with Disabilities Act of 1990 is the law. All MBTA transportation must be compliant with the law, and the MBTA was reminded by the United States Department of Transportation General Counsel in a letter of November 2016 that anyone and everyone can find on the internet. In fact, the reason I bring this letter up is Milton specifically filed a lawsuit against the MBTA for not repairing damaged staircases at the Milton Station. The letter specifically stated back in 2016 that any transportation must put in an ADA ramp or an elevator to access. So when we talk about money, that was a costly lawsuit against the MBTA we lost, because they can't rebuild those stairs. So that's a fact. You can all look up that lawsuit. The ADA is a federal mandatory law to abide by and also should be abided by out of basic human consideration of the disabled who would seek housing in these proposed zones. At the trolley itself is not, it violates the law. It violates the American with Disabilities Act. The sidewalks to get there violates the act. And even the fact that there's no parking, no parking at all at Valley Road violates the fact, let alone handicap parking. That's the first argument that I want to put on the record for those who are disabled, that it is the law. The second argument, that it is the law, relates to the two false statements by proponents of Article 6 that quoted "all attempts have failed." That's in quotes, "and after many attempts, all shot down," in quotes. Thanks to a prior presenter, two prior presenters, you learned that the Plymouth Superior Court just last Wednesday, June 11th, heard the six residents, taxable residents, argument just last Wednesday, and it was not all related to the mandate. The second portion, finally, for the first time, when the argument was given regarding the Rapid Transit, that Milton is not Rapid Transit, the American with Disabilities Act violations were included. So if you even just have any disability and want to ride that trolley, it's difficult. A friend of mine rode it in a wheelchair years ago and would never do it again. So that hearing that you just saw absolutely did happen, and you can listen to it yourself, has not come back with a ruling yet. That was the very first time the American with Disabilities Act was presented, has a good reason why Milton's trolleys are not Rapid Transit, so I'm looking forward to hearing that. The third, "it's the law," has to do with, if it's the law, does Article 6 versus Article 5 give us more or less of a financial fine, potentially, if less disabled individuals are impacted? I mean, that's a serious question. And in fact, I'd like to ask the moderator, what, if he could please ask Town Council, what are the options if this active pending case ruling comes back on that? I only know of one, there were three topics, and Attorney Paul Hogan could address that after we hear from Town Council, if the moderator would allow. The mandate, I'm not concerned about that. The Rapid Transit being ADA compliant, I am concerned about that. There was a third reason, but... But what would happen to Milton if the ruling comes back, you're not Rapid Transit, and if we pass 25 versus 10%, 25% versus 10%? The fact is, the Milton Communities Act is not fair to disabled, and that makes it illegal per the ADA. Do I think it's going to come to that? No, I don't think anyone has the money to fight it all the way, but let's fight for fairness for those with disabilities, because it's human decency to do that. So if the moderator would allow Town Council, sorry, are you? If the moderator would allow Town Council to answer the question, if the Plymouth Superior Court decision on, not on the mandate issue, but on the Rapid Transit issue finally being presented also with the ADA, and there was a third issue, which I can't remember right this minute, what would Town Council say Milton's options?
Ms. Agostino, given the late hour and other speakers waiting, we are clearly going to have to reconvene tomorrow night. So I would ask Town Council if they could research that to give you an answer tomorrow night.
Great, I'll give you the questions to pass. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, folks, slow down, slow down, take a breath. We have, seven people have been waiting to speak. It's getting late, specifically, it's 10 minutes of 11. If I would ask if the speakers could reduce their comments to two or three minutes, we could get to a vote tonight before we leave. And I think that that would be preferred by the members. We will have to reconvene tomorrow night anyway, we have another article to consider, but it would be nice if we could finish the home stretch on the article we've been listening to all night. So with that, madam over here, you're recognized, and please, brevity is best. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name's Linda Bosworth. I have lived on Ridgewood Road for 33 years. I've been a lifelong town resident, and I am not a member of any board. So I also want to stipulate, I am related to the Ice House developer. No, I am not part of that project. And don't panic over the amount of papers in my hand, I just went with the extra-large print. As a homeowner on the street that is landlocked by Randolph Ave, I share the concern of neighbors over the traffic flow, and states plan to remove the lights and chicanate it and replace it with a roundabout. While we're here tonight to vote on articles that change the zoning and therefore drive and regulate future housing developments, this segues directly into the ever-increasing traffic and other problems in the town. This is a quality of life issue for everyone. I recently drove from Randolph Ave to Pleasant Street by the old Benz factory and was stunned to see the traffic for the turnoff was backed up to the old dump road from the stop sign. I realized this isn't even close to being the only congested intersection in town. Milton has become virtually impossible to navigate during commuter hours and weekends as well. What used to be an easy 10 or 15-minute drive across town has become an epic journey and a trial of patience instead. This is without the potential 2,500 units of additional housing that some believe we should move forward on. We already have additional housing under construction. It's not clear to me if these buildings will be considered under the 25% plan, but I don't see how it's possible to develop additional multiple-unit housing beyond those currently underway. We need clear answer to the questions of how to manage the traffic that will undoubtedly come with the additional living units when the town is already struggling under current conditions, even before construction has been completed for the units being built. Traffic is only part of the equation. We just had an override for the school budget, and we're told it was a critical decision and would face draconian cuts that would have to be considered without it. There are still plans to consider building at least one, if not two more, schools. What will those projected needs be if we move forward with the 25% plan? Where is there enough land to construct one or two more schools with staff parking and bus drop-off? What about the strain on other services such as DPW, police, and fire departments? Taxes are ever-increasing, as it is forcing many residents, and particularly our older population, to reconsider whether or not it's worth remaining in the town. Can you imagine being 70 or 80 years old, or the caregivers of older parents, and having to decide to relocate at this stage of life? And while you might roll your eyes over that scenario, it could happen to any one of us or our beloved parents in the future if we don't give immediate and thoughtful consideration to our future growth. For those who support the 25% plan, I'd respectfully ask you to reconsider your position. The town people elected the planning board members, and the Warrant Committee is made up of dedicated volunteers with solid professional experience. These people have all been entrusted to act in the best interest of the town and have invested incredible time and consideration of the plans for 25 versus 10%. It's extremely significant to note that the Warrant Committee majority and all but one planning board member, that I understand, are advocating for the 10% plan. This isn't about gatekeeping, exclusivity, racism, or any other ugly label. The indisputable fact is Milton is limited in both size and resources and can't continue down the path of unchecked growth. The things that make us such a desirable place to live, amazing schools, small-town charm, beautiful green parks, and caring neighbors are already under significant strain and will eventually disappear if we don't course correct. That needs to happen now. I'll leave you with one more fact to consider. A lot of people aren't aware that the developers of the Jessen Building in East Milton Square had approached the town and said they'd be willing to cap the expressway at their own cost if the town would allow them to build either a parking garage or a second office building. My husband maintained that's a fact. Well, it's easy to play armchair quarterback now. Town management at that time didn't have the foresight to see what the future would look like and rejected the proposal. Can you imagine how many thousands of dollars the town would have saved in traffic studies in East Milton alone if that had been allowed? Let's not make the same error in judgment and rush to commit to a plan that could have disastrous consequences we may not be able to recover from. If the 25% plan is implemented, it will be virtually impossible to backtrack if it's approved and be as damaging as I feel it may be. For the sake of the town, I ask you to please consider supporting the 10% plan.
Okay, folks, here's our situation. Since 1992, when I first became a member, it's always been a really hard and fast goal to conclude evening meetings by 11 o'clock. We cannot do that with the amount of people waiting to speak and then have them speak and vote on this article. We have to reconvene tomorrow night anyway, we have another article. So with that knowledge, I would entertain a motion to adjourn until 7:30. It's been made, seconded, and it is a, you all have your vote? We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no? Aye. All right, folks, hey, don't leave, please. We're going to do what we're going to do. I can't determine, we're going to do an electronic vote. So it's a motion to adjourn, it's not debatable, but we have to vote on it. Thank you, members. You can see the vote, we are adjourned. Thank you, see you tomorrow night.